Good evening, everyone. This is Councilor James Burke, Chair of the Public Works Committee. Just letting you know that I just got a text from President Pro Tempner Tatas that she's running a few minutes late. So we do not have a quorum of the Public Works Committee at this time, so we'll just wait a few minutes until we do. Thank you very much. All right. Good evening, everyone. I believe I now, this is James Burke, Chair of the Public Works Committee. I believe now I see Counselor Sadi present. Are you here, John?
I am.
Thank you very much, sir. So now we have a quorum of the Public Works Committee. Again, James, Counselor James Burke, Chair of the Public Works Committee. I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee for Tuesday, September 8th, 6:00 P.M. Just read some of the logistics. This meeting will be held virtually. Due to the ongoing national state public health emergency caused by the global coronavirus pandemic, City of New London public meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at newlondonct.org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of this meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing to jstarts@newlondonct.org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link on the City of New London website, This link will bring you to a fillable form where you may submit your name and be added to the public comment list and called on via Zoom during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing or your name submitted on the fillable signup form on the city website at least 15 minutes prior to the scheduled start of the meeting. Please include your address and your written public comment submission. So with that, again, I'll introduce the members of the committee. We have myself, Counselor James Burke, the Chair. We have Counselor John Sadi, who was here with us. The other committee member, President Pro Temp Nartatos, will be joining us a little bit later. She's running a few minutes late. And looking at other counselors, we have Counselor Reona Dice here with us. Let's see, I believe I saw Counselor Kevin Booker Jr., City Council President Efren Dominguez, and I believe I saw City Counselor Curtis Goodwin a moment ago. So with that, we'll move right on into public comment. As of a few moments ago, we did not have any, but Jennifer starts. If you could just let us know if there has been any submissions for public.
Hi, no, I don't have any.
All right, thank you so much, Jenny. With that, there are two cams that the Public Works Committee will be voting on or taking a look at tonight. The first, if I'll first, if I could just have a committee member to perhaps move the cam.
I'd like to move the cam that the City Council approved the request of the Director of Public Works to authorize the mayor to enter into a non-binding letter of intent with Commercial Solar Works to allow Green Skies Clean Energy and Standard Solar to submit their projects and secure a queue in the state virtual net metering program and negotiate a 20-year power purchase agreement.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sadi. I will second moving that cam. And with that, I would see, I'd like to welcome Public Directs to Work, Public Works Director Seer to us tonight. Director Seer, if you could perhaps just, you know, give us an overview of an excellent, some background on this, and then we'll open up for questions. You are muted, Brian.
Mute? Is that better?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, it's, it's a fairly complex kind of process that we're involved in, but I'll try to make it very, very simple. There's a bunch of stuff to cover, but I think we can get through it. I mean, overview on this, the genesis of this is we're always looking for ways to save the city money, to save the taxpayers' money in terms of all of our functions, but especially in terms of our utilities, which are necessary to our daily operations. And also, we want to be a responsible municipality in terms of where we get our power from and that we're involved as much as possible in utilizing renewable sources of energy. So those, those have always been our goals and priorities. So one thing we looked into, oh, four, four to four and a half years ago, was the possibility of adding solar to Bates Woods up to the landfill that has been capped and closed up there. We looked into that in some great detail. The actual engineering, the logistics of connecting, of actually building an array up there, connecting that to a grid, having everything that soup to nuts would need to be done to that. The actual benefit to the city was, was not great. It just, all the different aspects were involved, were not, were not optimal, but we have kept our eye on the radar as far as whatever else is available. So the state has had a program. It's currently closed, it's been closed for a couple of years, but they're opening it again shortly with a special session. That's why we're here tonight at this point. A special session, and it's called Virtual Net Metering. And basically what it allows is it allows municipalities to enter into power purchase agreements with solar projects. They don't have to be within your municipality. That, that's the virtual part of it. And so that program was funded with a round that ended a couple of years ago. There's another round coming up. And so for the past six months or so, we've been planning and taking steps to be included when that became open again, because the state will basically put in money to make this virtual net metering program work with the goal of having more renewable energy in the state and providing municipalities with the benefits of that. So the steps involved to get into that virtual net metering plan, to get into the queue, was an RFQ process, and there's a consultant that handled that for us. And so they put all these specs together, they check all the loads of our various accounts in the city, and they find, they try to have developers that are out there planning projects, solar projects in the state of Connecticut, and seeing if they could match what our needs for power were with the parameters of what they were putting together for projects. So that RFQ was put together, it was put out and advertised in our normal bid process for this city, and it was overseen by a consultant group, Commercial Solar Works is their name. And so we went through all that process. They did get the results of that, and there were, I believe, four companies that had bid, and they're basically bidding on supplying us with power and what rates that would, that would end up at. And it's in the city's best interest that they have the lowest rate that we would pay. And it gets a little complicated, but the way it's calculated in virtual net metering is, whatever power we use as part of that agreement, we get a credit from the state's virtual net metering program for, depending if it's on peak or off peak, it's in the range of 15 to 16 cents kilowatt hour. We get a credit for that, and that would approximate what we pay for power now between the power supply generation and then ever-source delivery charge, just like you would have on your regular ever-source bill. So the credits would come in at that, at that current rate, and then we would negotiate the best power purchase agreement we could have with a company that was putting together a solar project that would have the capability of matching what our needs are, what our demand loads are, and they would be able to match that with, with the capacity of their system. And we try to get the match that works out the best, and that's what the RFQ process, you know, opened up to see what interest it would be out there and what level it would be at. So where we are at this moment is we want to get into that queue that's going to open very quickly at the state. And so the state, what we need to do is, in effect, give them a good faith commitment that we've done our homework, we've gone through the RFQ process, we want to be in the virtual net metering queue, we want to take advantage of that program, and we're this far along in the process to get there. And, and, and so a letter, a non-binding letter of intent basically would say, we've done this, we want to be part of the program, these are the bidders that bid, these are the kind of parameters we worked with. We don't need to have a final agreement in place, and it's not binding. We're not going to be held to anything, but we need that letter to stay in the queue or make sure we get in the queue with the state. And so hypothetically, going forward, if we get into the program, if those credits come in place, if we're looking at what, what has been proposed, and eventually, if everything goes well, that we would negotiate, and that would obviously come to council at that point, negotiate an actual contract or agreement. They're normally about 20 years is the terms of them, and we'd be looking in the range of paying. We would get the credits from the solar energy used, renewable energy used, and then our, our agreement with the developer would be around the six cents range. So very ballpark terms, we'd be going on all of these accounts. And the way they do this is they set up, they take, it's like the high-low hanging fruit, if you will. The greatest uses, they take the five or six or seven largest use accounts of the city, and then they try to match those to a developer that would have the capability for that. And that is basically, in terms of use, it's basically all of our schools and our wastewater treatment plant. And so taking those largest accounts into effect and a rate going from 15 cents to, or 16 cents to around six cents, it's very much an estimate, but over a 20-year period, we'd be looking at about $18 million is, is, as what we're looking at now, which would compute to about 900,000 or something a year, very, very significant savings. I'm almost done. So that's the scope of, of, pretty close to where we're at, if we can get into that virtual net metering program and approve for that. And then, this is just another aside, should, and this, it's, it's preliminary, premature for me to offer that, but should another developer down the road look at Bates Woods and consider that that would be a place that they would want to develop a solar array on and sell energy virtually, like the projects would be, as were proposed, to other municipalities, we would still have that, and we would still get a pretty good financial remuneration as the host or the property owner of that, if that makes sense. So I, I, that's, that's kind of the picture. Circling back, what we have in front of us is, you know, we're asking City Council in all transparency to, you know, be involved, and we want to show the state that the, the city is definitely committed and has done this process, is committed to moving forward on, on this. So that's, that's pretty much big picture. I'll entertain questions from anybody, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Seer. This is Committee Chair Burke. I will just first like to note that about five minutes ago, President Committee Member President Pro Temp Nartatos had joined us. So at this point, I'll open it up. Counselor Sadi, do you have any questions for Director Seer?
Yes, I do. First of all, Brian, thank you for correcting yourself. Originally, you called an RFQ, and then you changed that to RFP, which I believe is what it is. So I have had an opportunity to review the 14 or 15 pages of documents that were given to us. And on, on a letter that you sent us, date of interdepartmental memorandum, you mentioned Green Skies Clean Energy and Standard Solar. But in your presentation, you mentioned four, that there were four responses to our RFP. I believe in the chart that I looked at, there was only two listed, so. Yeah, so could you explain that, please? Why there was two, opposed to four?
There actually were four, four companies that, that were listed in the bid overview. They, the page numbers aren't here, but it was Alco Energy, Revity Energy, Green Skies and Standard. It's, I don't know, about halfway through your packet.
If I may, Director Seer, this is Chair Burke. Counselor Sadi, on the RFP results section, it is the first page under that, or it says RFP bidders, and then it gives a tab of four different RFP submissions, followed by the overview of the two of Green Skies and Standard Solar, two pages left.
Yeah, unfortunately, I saw that earlier and I just can't find it. But go ahead. So the four are listed, could you explain why two are disqualified?
Their, their rates were significantly higher than the two lower rates.
The, the page I'm looking for is, okay. And we talk, when we say there rate, we're talking the PPA rate?
Correct.
All right, and so Clean Focus, okay, Green Skies Clean Focus was .06, Standard Solar was .0618. And I didn't, I didn't see the other two. Oh, yes, I do. Okay, I see them now. All right, now, the other thing too is, and please refresh my memory. We, we have a letter here dated April 20th from Cleese Sustainability, and I believe they were the ones that were hired to manage this RFP process. Is that correct?
They were, I'm, I'm not nitpicking, they were, they were engaged. They're not actually hired, but the city did engage them to do the research. Yes.
Okay, so I don't understand what the difference, did, did we pay them money?
No.
Okay. And it talks about on page two of three of the Cleese Sustainability letter, legal services, three cents per watt hour DC based on total installed solar capacity, and then technical services, CSW Energy, seven cents per DC, seven cents per watt DC based on total installation of solar capacity. So what, what does that mean in dollars and cents?
I don't think those are, I'm not right there, I don't think those are cents. I think those are, are, are 07.
Well, there is, this is page two of three in the, so it does say three cents.
So there, there is, there is a bundled remuneration to Commercial Solar Works that's bundled into the purchase power rate as, as proposed from the bid. So that's not something that we would spend separately. That's telling the developer that those would be within the price of the final contract. Those would be part of it.
Okay. At this point in time, Chairman Burke, Counselor John Sadi has no further questions.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sadi. This is Chairman Burke to President Pro Temp Nartatos. Do you have any questions for Director Seer on this item?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Burke. So thanks for the presentation. I think you went over, you know, it was quite thorough. My only question to you is, I know, like you had mentioned, you know, this, that we had been talking about solar a couple of years back. It sounds like it's a really ideal time to move forward, that it's not new news for people to know. You know, I'm, I'm a very, very strong environmentalist, and I support solar. I, I have a question about, you know, when you go to the bids, we've disqualified two, we've accepted two. Do we run, and, and, and I'm sorry, but I don't have the criteria in front of me. Do we run ratings with, like, Better Business Bureau? You know, are those, do those come into play when we finally decide which, which direction we're going to go into?
Yes. Yes.
So which one is it? Is it Better Business Bureau?
I can't say exactly what it is, but the vetting process, if, is, is, is we move forward, the next step is for us to be told by the state that we are qualified for the VFM virtual net metering program. And then, once that's in place, then as far as part of the negotiation, and which the negotiation doesn't just deal with price, it deals with all sorts of legal issues regarding a potential contractual arrangement we would make, all of that vetting that would be appropriate. That's not in my wheelhouse to, to, to say which would the correct rating agency be or not. But at that point, vetting their track record and, and, and financial rating, our, our finance director, our law director, they would all be involved in terms of, of vetting that process. And with each of these, with each of these companies, if that answers. Yeah.
Yeah, that does, that answers my, I think, you, I think Director Seer's.
Thank you very much, President Pro Temp Nartatos. At this point, I just, we have one other cam after this, and we're running low on time. So I'd ask other counselors just to speak up or let your name know if any noncommittee members have questions for Director Seer.
Real quick.
Thank you, President Dominguez.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Burke, through you two, Director Seer. Really quickly, you alluded to 20 years, what, I know you talked about it, but what, why is it like a 20-year contract?
That we will our energy at a given rate under the terms that we end up finalizing with them. Would be a 20-year contract to be renegotiated after that point. And 20 years is almost the default or standard for solar things. It probably isn't a fact of what state those panels are in after 20 years, et cetera, et cetera. It's kind of the lifespan at, at this time. It's, it's what all solar agreements, 15 or 20 years are usually said.
All right, thank you so much. That's it. Thank you, Chairman Burke.
This is Chairman Burke. Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Any other of the city counselors, any questions for Director Seer on this issue? Seeing none, I will. Brian, thanks. I just have one quick question. So looking on the shortlist recommendation pages, just a question about the discrepancy in forecasted completion date. I mean, I see the numbers, it makes sense to me, why Green Focus and Standard Solar were selected for the different portions of the city. But why is one company able to forecast completion, you know, Q3 of '21, and the other one, Q3 of '22?
Because that individual project is further ahead in their process, such as getting planning and zoning approval, DEEP approval, financing approval, they're just farther along.
Makes sense. Okay, I have nothing further. Other questions for Director Seer? Seeing none, I will go ahead and take a vote of the committee members on moving this cam forward to their full council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, abstain. Carrie, thank you very much. Moving on to our second cam of the evening, if I could ask either of the committee members to move the cam?
Yes, the President Pro Temp, I will move the cam. If I can get a second, I'll read it.
Second.
Move the cam, can I get a second? The City Council approves the request of the Director. The City Council, did I lose you? The City Council, okay, approves the request of the Director of Public Works for the purchase of 2,000 tons of treated salt from Champion Salt at the price of $63.86 per ton for a total of 127,720. Funding will come from Town Aid Road Storms Supplies Account.
Thank you very much, President Pro Temp. Brian, perhaps if you could do a real brief overview before we open for questions? Awesome.
Every August or September, I come to you with this similar kind of request. The last couple of years, we've engaged driven enterprises. They were located on State Pier, and they were giving us good service, and they won the low bid. There is a bidding process that Capital Region Council of Governments holds every year. This year, they were not the low bidder for our region, and their, their situation is a little precarious in that I think they have to move their operations off State Pier, whatever. We went with the CROG low bid. Champion Salt, it's a company that does a lot of work in Massachusetts, and they're doing work in Connecticut now. They came to meet with us, they were the low bid, they have a superior product, in my view, to what we've been using. We've been using a molasses-based kind of sticky salt, which can be a little bit messy and gum up our trucks and things. Champion has a really good product, it's a lot drier, it's got a, it, it still has the ice retardant capabilities, but it's a corn-based, it's basically soaked into the salt, a lot of technical stuff. But they're the low bid, they come down and met with us, they're very solid when we need it. And I will make the point that we're just setting that 2,000 tons. If we don't need that, we're not obligated to buy it. So there's no limit on what we buy, but it's nice to have that and cut a PO for it, just so we know that we're protected on that. Hopefully, we won't need it like.
Thank you very much, Director Seer. I will open it up to if either of the committee members have questions, starting with Counselor Sadi.
Thank you very much. This is Counselor John Sadi. Brian, just reading the chart, seven, three, I believe it's the second page of your, your exhibit. I found it a little bit hard to read, but it's listed our Cargill, Champion, DRVN, Eastern Salt, and Morton Salt. And then below it, it has a dollar figure for Cargill, 1.560, 620, whatever. Champion, 1569.67. DRVN, which is not even close, 8.09.5. And Eastern Salt is 1598.79, and Morton Salt, 1532.6. Why would DRVN Enterprises' numbers not be even 800 as opposed to 1,500?
Those might be quantity numbers, John, because the numbers that the price per ton should be around $60 to $70.
Director Seer, if I may, I think what the, the numbers that Counselor Sadi's talking about is total cost. And you'll see, for example, on DRVN, that they did not submit a bid. So my guess, perhaps I would, Director Seer, do you think I'm correct in that? That their number's lower because they didn't submit a bid for all the sections?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it is hard to read, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, no, I, I now. Okay, no, I, I, I now. Well, I, I, and so unit price, and it's broken down into certain ton, tonnage maybe or something?
Yeah, that's what that is, is that's part of the overall CROG bid. What matters to us for Region Three is what the, what the, um, price is per ton. The unit.
Would I find that in column number four?
Well, I think it's column number two is Champion.
Correct.
We would be the third block down.
Right, but so how do I judge? In other words, is Champion, which you listed, hold on a minute, I believe, sixty-three eighty-six. But I have Champion at, okay, so you're going down to the third category or the third, uh.
Yes, and.
Or both that, a sixty-eight, a sixty-seven. What's the, what is that? Is that different month or what exactly is that?
Well, if you go down to the third row, actually, for Region Three, if it's printed in color.
Okay, no, you're right. Region Three, yep, I got it.
There's a green box that CROG put, that was the low bid. So Champion was not the low bid for the other regions, but they were for Region Three.
You're right. I, I forgot when I, I did read that there are. Okay, so I'm good. I'm good. I have no further questions.
Answer some of my questions as well. Opening up, uh, try to make it quick to.
Thank you, Chair Burke. I do not have any questions for Director Seer.
Thank you very much. Noncommittee members of the council, uh, if you have any questions for Director Seer, feel free to just, um, I will go ahead and call a vote to move the second cam on to council. Uh, all members of the committee.
Counselor Burke, I, I did have one more question of, uh, Director Seer.
Go for it, Counselor Sadi.
So, um, this year approves the purchase of two thousand tons. How many tons did we use last year?
Um, a lot less than two thousand.
Right. And so what, what happened to the stuff that we purchased last year? Um, do we still have that in stockpile somewhere or was it returned to the provider or what?
We, we usually purchase in five hundred ton, uh, groups. And so we probably have about two hundred and fifty tons left. That's under a tarp, under our bridge at our, uh, Public Works complex. We do have a salt shed that we're constructing. That's going to go into the salt shed and used initially before we get additional product.
And, and I know that, uh, last year was a very mild, uh, winter. So what was our, uh, average uses over like, say, the last five years?
We'd be around sixteen to eighteen hundred tons a year as an average.
And if for some reason we were to exceed the two thousand tons, will we be able to purchase more at the same price?
We will, yes.
No further questions. This is Counselor John Sadi.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much, Councilor Sadi. We'll take a vote on the motion. All, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Motion to forward, motion to afford, approve, forward to the city council agenda.
Correct. Yep. So all those.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody. We're almost on time. Uh, at this point, I'm looking for one last motion from the committee members.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, Public Works Committee is adjourned at six thirty-two. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good evening. Buenos noches. Tonight's public safety meeting, I would like to call this meeting to order. Today, Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, and the time is six thirty-three PM. The committee members are President Dominguez, Counselor Dice, and also want to thank the other councilors who are present for tonight's meeting. The list of the, the councilors who are present is President Pro Temp, Alma Nartatis, Counselor Goodwin, Counselor Burke, and Counselor Sadi. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the City Cougar's Model Armored Vehicle, also known as the Rescue Vehicle. Due to the national and state public health emergency caused by the global coronavirus pandemic, the City of New London public meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at www.nulondonct.org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing to jstarts@nulondonct.org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link to the City of New London website. This link will bring you to a fillable form where you may submit your name and you will be added to the public comment list and called on during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing or your name submitted on the fillable signup form on the city website at least fifteen minutes prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. Please include your address and your written public comment submission, public comment. Um, Jay Starts, this is Starts. I know we have someone from the floor who has a comment.
Hi, yep. Um, do you want me to read them or do you want to read them?
Um, can, can you read them please?
Yep. So the first one is, uh, Kale Peck of thirty-six Sunset Road who wants to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Peck?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Peck, you have three minutes?
Go ahead.
You can begin your public comment, sir?
Oh, yes. Um, I just wanted to give my public comment to the, um, the, uh, city, um, in regards to the safety vehicle.
Yes.
Um, I've read about it and, um, I think it's something that New London desperately needs. And I'm, I'm happy that the police department is doing a good job with, uh, finding new ways to keep us safe. And, um, pretty much that's, that's my comment. I, I, I trust in our police department and, uh, I trust that the, uh, police professionals, uh, know what's best. And, uh, like I said, I'm in favor of, of keeping it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peck. Um, Mr. Starts, who do we have next?
Um, the next three are all written comments. Frida Barrigan is next. Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on one second, please. Sorry, I just got to pull it up. Um, Frida Barrigan, two forty-six Connecticut Avenue, New London. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to offer my support for giving back the military vehicle. We don't need it. That is my view. Over the holiday weekend, I witnessed New London's police officers conducting themselves as public servants and guardians of public safety. I am sending this letter with a lot of admiration and respect for the work of New London's public safety officers. On Saturday night, there was some sort of disturbance at the basketball courts in Bartlett Park, patty corner from our house. My husband and I were strolling to Family Dollar for much needed ice cream and stopped to Rubberneck and Kibitz for a bit. We observed respect, professionalism and footwork. Officers were out of their cars and connecting directly with the young people in the park. I would say that there is greater community protection and public safety being built by that sort of face-to-face police work and the police officers versus young people. Pick up basketball games we've witnessed since the spring than could ever be developed from behind or inside our very free, but very expensive armored military vehicle. Just wait until we see it, tear up our already pothole packed streets or get the fuel bill for one spin around downtown. That thing is not free. Let's give it back and focus on community needs. Um, and next is Shanice Austin. Um, Shanice Austin, eleven thirty-two Ocean Avenue. Uh, I'm not sure if you are all aware, but today Hartford Public Schools had their first day of school interrupted and it is unclear when the new first of school will be. This major disruption was caused by a ransomware virus attack to about two hundred of their three hundred servers. This attack affected their IT system that houses student addresses, grades and attendance, as well as a system that communicates transportation routes to their bus vendor. My questions are what specific public safety measures has the city taken to prevent such an attack to our systems? What safety measures are in place to protect private information of our residents? And in the event of data breach, what is the protocol to mitigate and inform the community? Are there funds in the budget to assess as well as increased technology security of our servers? Please clarify. Thank you. And one more, um, Kat Guler, and that's written, so I'll read that one. Uh, Kat Guler, fifty-four Dow Street. Good evening, committee members and councilors. I'm running tonight to ask that you vote no on the sole agenda item of tonight's agenda to declare the armored vehicle military surplus and dispose of it. New London is a seaside community prone to weather phenomena of all sorts. In recent years, our city has experienced major blizzards, severe hurricanes and extensive flooding. In all of these events, we had people trapped and unable to leave their homes and in some instances trapped in their vehicles. This armored vehicle allows the police department access to rescue people that would not be able to be reached when wind speeds, water depth and other weather circumstances take normal vehicles out of service. As a lifesaving device, it is invaluable. We have a large elderly population in New London and it can reasonably be expected that there will be medical emergencies during a weather emergency. As the family member of a severely disabled person, my home could one day be the site of one of those emergencies. I expect that when I dial nine-one-one, we will get a response even in the severest of weather, wouldn't you? This armored vehicle will allow for that. I understand that the council and administration are upset that they weren't consulted on the purchase first. To that, I say this, there's no room for hurt feelings when it comes to saving lives. The vehicle is a necessity and must stay in our possession. It can easily and inexpensively be repainted as other cities have done to not make it look big and scary. Police administration has been very clear that its intended use is to save lives and not to militarize the department. And they should be allowed to do so. Please vote no to declaring the armored vehicle surplus. The first time this vehicle is used to save someone, I guarantee you will be glad you voted tonight to keep it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Starts.
You're welcome.
Now we'll have like a presentation, a brief presentation by Sergeant Keating.
Want to make sure I'm up and running here. Uh, let me work on this. Uh, I cannot share my presentation. Uh, it says I'm disabled. So I will.
If you can speak for about three or four minutes on it?
I absolutely will. So unfortunately I don't.
I just, uh, gave you permission.
Oh, thank you, Dana. All right. I don't know what you can see. Do, do you see the video, the presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move through it quickly. Uh, so basically the first thing you see, this, this is it. You know, we realize it's a large vehicle. We know it's a very military looking vehicle. Um, unfortunately for us, to get something for free from the military, you have to get something that they build for themselves. So they build for practicality, uh, not for something that they want, um, to look nicer on a car lot. So, uh, unfortunately, this is where we're at. Um, the civilian version of this, what the capabilities of this vehicle is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, which we know is a lot of money and, uh, we didn't have that kind of money when this was offered to us. So this, uh, vehicle originally, the state, Connecticut State Police asked for two of these. They knocked it down to one, but our corner of the state, the forgotten corner of the state, uh, didn't have anything left. Um, or didn't have anything available to us. The next closest vehicle that can handle this sort of, um, level of response is in Willamette. Um, I was born and raised here in New London. My parents still live here. My siblings live here. I have aunts, uncles, cousins. Everyone's here. And, you know, I'm familiar with the, the people of New London and how I can serve them. I've been serving them for over twenty years as a police officer. My family and I just wrote a book about the police department two years ago, so we got into a lot of the history. Um, so we, I just want to help. I just want to help people be safe and, and I feel one of the ways we can do it is through a vehicle like this. If you look at the photo I have up now, I'm sure you are. Um, you can see there's a lot of amenities inside. We have a backboard. We have rescue equipment. Um, there's seats with seat belts. That's one thing that our other vehicles don't have, uh, the, the large off-road vehicles that we have. Um, so this is great for things like hurricanes, um, blizzards, floods, uh, when it's cold, warm, doesn't matter. This is a air conditioned and heated vehicle. Um, there's no tactical military equipment left on it. The, the military strips all of that off before we get it. Any weapons that they use in the military that could be put on this are not eligible for police use. We can't get them. We don't own them. We have no intention of trying to get them, even if we wanted to, we couldn't. So the, the weapons we use when we drive by you in a police car are the only weapons that would be used inside this vehicle. Um, this is a little bit about hurricanes, just in, um, Hurricane Katrina, I'm sorry, Hurricane Sandy, about six hundred thousand residents in Connecticut were without power, which means if they needed oxygen, they needed tanks brought in. If no one can get to them, they can't get their oxygen tanks, diabetes medicines, uh, trips to the emergency room, heart attacks, people are out trying to clear trees. Um, one thing this can do is it does have a heavy duty winch, so we can move debris out of our way. Um, there's some more stats there for, uh, Hurricane Gloria. Seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand people were without power. Um, the, one other thing about this is that this has a nine-foot vehicle height, so we can pull up to a house and rescue people out of the second floor. We also have a ladder that we can mount on top that can be used to rescue people from the third floor. Why is it important in a hurricane? I want to start before I talk about the fire department's, um, standard operating procedure is that I have an immense respect for our firemen. They're very brave. I'm friends with, I, I feel I'm friends with all of them. They're wonderful people. But they have standard operating procedures to keep them safe. One of them is that when winds are sustained at fifty miles an hour or faster, they no longer respond or wind gusts over sixty-five. Um, and prior to that, if they feel it's unsafe, they can come off the road. So you're not even to hurricane speeds yet when they by standard operating procedure have to come off the road. And part of the reason is that their equipment is not suited for hurricanes. Um, their vehicles can be damaged. You, you, all of you just voted to spend a lot of money, about one point three million for a truck, I believe, and about a quarter of a million for an ambulance. That can take a lot of abuse. This vehicle we have, um, since we haven't paid anything for it, we also don't have to pay for the parts that we need. I can find them on the same program. And if it gets damaged, quite frankly, we don't care. We just take it, park it back in the spot where it's going to be probably, um, ninety-nine point five percent of its entire life, uh, inside a garage. And the next time we need it, we'll take it out with a big dent in the side because we don't care how it looks. We just want to save some lives. Um, some snow response, uh, it has four-wheel drive. One thing we can do is we can get hospital staff, nurses, doctors to the hospital. Uh, in this bad weather, we can do multiple people at, uh, one time and they'll all have a seatbelt in the seat as opposed to trying to get one or two in a police car or putting them in the back of a cargo truck. Uh, we can, at some point, the tow trucks stop running during snowstorms. We call them all the time and they say, that's it. This is our final run. We can still take this out. It has a winch and we can get emergency vehicles out. We can get other vehicles out. We can start to help clear roads. And one of our storms recently, uh, or small city plow actually had to be pulled out by one of our four-by-four vehicles. So we never would have got one of the large, uh, plows out if they needed help. And the Blizzard seventy-eight, I know a lot of people talk about that Blizzard. They had to bring troops in from, from Fort Hood in Texas. That takes a long time to get them here. Uh, college campuses were running out of food, so they had a rash and food at the campuses. And at one point, there was a hundred passengers that slept at the Union Station. And those are all people we need to service. So we love, we love our businesses. We love the Coast Guard Academy. We love all our colleges, but we have to protect them if they need help. And one of the ways we can do it is to bring things to them. We can bring personnel to them. Um, the Lawrence Memorial Paramedics have already committed. They said, if you have a vehicle like this that will keep us safe, we will go with you to any medical emergency during a hurricane, blizzard, any sort of snow event like that or weather event like that. Um, so they said, they said they don't care if we have to carry them on our back. They will get there as long as we can get them there safely. And they said with this, they will. Um, also during the Blizzard seventy-eight, the streets in New Haven were closed for four days. So it's a long time to not be able to get out of your house and get anywhere. Um, it can be used for medical responses, we just mentioned. It can be used for, um, at any time of the year. It's not something we want to use all the time though. I want to make that very clear. It's only going to be used during extreme weather situations where we can't get any other type of vehicle there. This is not something that's going to patrol the streets. The only time you should see this vehicle out is during, uh, major incidents, that severe weather or.
You have, you have one more minute because we have time constraints right now.
Yes, sir. So, um, you know, this will only be used during extreme weather conditions and it'll be used, um, it, God forbid, if there's like an active shooter. So that maintenance runs and training is the only time this will leave the building and we can forewarn the public. Uh, these are just some pictures of damaged fire apparatus for. These are just some pictures of damaged fire apparatus for people who think those vehicles are invincible. They're not. Same with our police vehicles. The top left is one of our own vehicles that was destroyed. And quite frankly, we didn't pay anything for the other vehicles, so we don't care. One stat I found, the average length of a mass shooting in the United States is 10 minutes. The state police takes two hours to get here. National Guard, with the approval of the governor, is about 12 hours. And we can't call the military, because that takes an act of Congress, literally. These are just some lists of all the people we try to protect in the city, who may become targets of someone who doesn't want good things to happen. City has about 28,000 people, probably swells to closer to 40 during the day with all of our large businesses. And we want to keep bringing them in and make them feel protected. And we want big businesses and national chain stores to know that we will protect them if they come here. Another quick point I'd like to make is that if we have a vehicle like this, and God forbid it's a barricaded situation, the only way presently to rescue someone who may be down is that we would have to put fire on that person. So we'd actually have to take shots to get somebody out. If we have a vehicle like this, it will protect us from rounds. We can pull in, block the person who's down, get out, get the person into the vehicle and drive away, and we never have to fire a single shot. We don't want to fire our weapons, contrary to what a lot of people might think. We don't want to hurt people. We want to save people. I'm a crisis negotiator. I'm on the crisis intervention team. And my goal is to try to get everybody out safely, and this is just one tool we can use to do so. So I'd like you to please just consider this. You know, if one life is saved, that's one life. That's one family we can tell we did this for. If we give it away, who are we willing to sacrifice?
Thank you very much, Sergeant Keating.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the committee. Counselor Dice.
This is Counselor Dice. My first question is, will this video be available for the community? Because right now, you had to rush through, and they have not had the opportunity to see this video and to be variant. So that's my first question.
Yes, I actually have a longer presentation that I sent out. Hopefully, the councilors received it. I will be more than glad to meet whoever wants to meet me wherever, whenever, and I will give a presentation and explain what our goals are with this.
Okay, and my second, my second statement is, well, I guess it could be a question or a statement I want to put it, is that my concern, I did have the opportunity to see this equipment. And in seeing it, I was really disappointed with the fact that we learned about this in February, and it is now September. And I'm just now getting this information about how this can be used. And therefore, that concerns me. So because that mean the people in the community haven't had a chance to review it. And as I said, when I was there, I kept seeing where are the youth. When I was seeing where the youth, I was talking about the youth that would be affected by this, if they see it rolling down their street. So I didn't see any New London students there. So I'm just saying. And so my question is, if the youth would like to see it, would this be something, or to go through the video, would this be something that be available for? And I'm talking about middle school and high school youth.
If I'm-
And their parents.
I'm sorry. If I'm given permission to do so, I will gladly engage the students. I taught the staff, the human trafficking, the required human trafficking by law. I love reaching out to the schools. I will meet anybody, anywhere. Like I said, I grew up here. I was youth in this city at one time, and I'd be more than glad to reach out and meet them.
This is Counselor Dice. Back to you, President, Chair Booker Jr.
Thank you very much, Counselor Dice. President Dominguez.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Booker. Good evening to everyone. Good evening to Sergeant Keating. Thank you for the presentation. So going back to the question that Counselor Dice said, so in February, was it when we got this truck?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, so how did this come about? Who got the idea? Was this a committee? How did this eventually develop? And how we got this truck? How did we get this truck to the city here?
So there's a program called the 1033 Program. I know it's not very popular right now, but the government offers equipment to us. We have some other non-militarized items from there. And we heard that they had a lot, an allotment of these that they were getting rid of, but there were two slated for the Connecticut State Police to come to Connecticut. When the Connecticut State Police decided they only wanted one, because we were in the region that didn't have many resources available to it, the rest of the state already has these issued to them, one was offered to us. We had a very short window of opportunity to make the arrangements. We even had to borrow a trailer from a local company. So we had to jump around and make a bunch of last-minute arrangements to get it up here.
Okay, thank you.
Ultimately, Counselor Dominguez, it was my decision-
Okay, that's what I wanted. So it was-
Under public spur-
Yes, okay.
It's about public safety. I err on the side of caution of public safety. It was my decision to pick up the vehicle.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir, of course.
I can open up the floor to maybe one or two more councilors. Counselor Burke.
Thank you very much, Chairman Booker. One question to, I believe Jeffrey Langer again. Are you on the line?
Yes.
Thank you, Attorney Langer again. One question, have you are aware of, you've had a chance to review House Bill 6004 and that concerning police accountability, which was recently passed by the Connecticut General Assembly?
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that bill essentially ends local police departments being able to acquire equipment through the 1033 Program?
I believe that is addressed, although I'll be honest, the portions of that that I was looking at were mostly involving governmental immunity and those issues as it affects our law enforcement agency. But I do know from a sort of a Cliff Notes version that some of that is addressed in that public act, yes.
Sure. So just a quick comment that, you know, considering our state legislature recently prevented local police departments from acquiring equipment from the 1033 Program, I think by keeping this, it would move us backwards, not forwards. Nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Burke. Counselor Sadie.
Thank you. This is Counselor John Sadie through you, Chairperson, to both the Chief and Sergeant Keating. Thank you. Thank you very, very much for the multiple-page presentation that was forwarded us through, I believe, the mayor's secretary. Very, very enlightening. And I'm not sure which one of you two actually put it together. Like Counselor Dice, I would highly recommend the police department figure a way to make that presentation available to the public. Because once you read that presentation, you better understand not only police officer safety, but more importantly, community-
Orderness.
Community safety. And so I would hope that there's some way that that can help educate the rest of the citizens of our community, as it has educated our city councilors. But again, I think I said on an email a little bit earlier, I support this vehicle for all the wonderful things that it does. And one of my sayings is always, if it's for free, it's for me. I think this is something that will be a great asset to our city. So thank you for all you gentlemen have done. Thank you, Chairman Booker.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sadie. I can probably open it up for one more question from a counselor. Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you, Chair Booker. Through you two, I guess it would be the police chief, Chief Price. Is there a reason why this presentation is now months behind and it wasn't brought forth originally when we originally either acquired the vehicle or you decided to get the vehicle? Is there a reason why we didn't have this presentation sooner?
We just recently created this presentation to present to the city council because of the city council was putting this on the agenda. So we needed to get out, we needed a public safety meeting so we could explain the purpose of this vehicle for everybody else. Yes, we're lagging behind in the time. We should have had it much earlier. However, we did not do it. We're putting it forward right now at the present time.
Was there any communication during the initial time that you purchased this with regard to this vehicle being a rescue vehicle, safety vehicle, et cetera? Was this how this was presented or marketed to us initially?
From inception, when we decided to pick up the vehicle, it's been a rescue vehicle. It's been marked rescue vehicle from the day we brought it back from the military base. And the intent was it to use it for rescues, for severe weather rescues, and for God forbid, if we were to have some type of active shooter incident taking place.
So listening to the severity of the scenarios that you're given, wouldn't that warrant this presentation coming in line with it? When we initially acquired it? I'm just confused as to how we're six, five to six months after the fact, coming up with the reasoning as to why we should have it.
The, I agree. We should have done it sooner. We did not. We felt, I'll follow the story for that one. It's my responsibility that we'd not bring it up sooner.
I don't mean to cut you off or anything right now, but due to time constraints right now, we have to get ready for our city council meeting. I'd like to make a motion to table it for the next public safety meeting. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Chair, I don't hear a second. And it's seven o'clock.
Alright.
Move on. Move the question.
Alright. Do we add entertainers?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn a public safety meeting.
Okay.
Point of order?
Yep.
Yeah, you have a motion on the floor, I believe. I believe it needs to be voted on before the meeting can be adjourned.
That's correct.
For, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on. The thing is that, this is President Dominguez. No, he said to table it, no one answered. So we got to move on. There's, so when, no one seconded his motion. So there is no motion on. So unless it was seconded, no one seconded it, Counselor Burke.
This is Counselor Dice. So this can will not move forward?
No, we're going to move forward to a city council.
The council.
Okay, so we're going to have a motion to move it forward, or is already on the agenda? Could you repeat that, Chair Booker?
Motion to move the can to city council?
I'll second that.
Okay, alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Alright, it's seven o'clock, 7:01. Good evening to everyone. Welcome to New London City Council. Today's date is September 8, 2020. I want to welcome all the councilors, and with that said, I'm going to have City Clerk Ayala, please, roll call vote, sir.
President Dominguez.
Present.
President Pro Temp Metartos.
Present.
Counselor Booker.
Present.
Counselor Sadie.
Here.
Counselor Goodwin.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Dice.
Present.
All present.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Dice. You have the prayer and pledge in this evening.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody if they can mute their mic, and I'm going to start off with the prayer, and then I'm going to ask for the flag to be displayed, and I would do the pledge allegiance. And then I would ask President Dominguez if he could do it in Spanish after I do it in English. Lord, thank you for gathering us all here as we go forward to do the best will, the will for our community. I ask that everyone present will have our citizens, our community, our people focused in their mind, in their heart, as we make decisions. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. And I ask everybody, if you able to stand or would like to stand, stand up for the pledge allegiance, and if we can have the flag displayed. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dice, for that prayer and for the pledge also. At this moment, I just want to welcome each and every one counselors, all the councilors. Also, want to welcome the mayor, the chief of police, and everyone else that's on tonight evening, especially those that are going to come and present, and especially our residents. We have maybe like, maybe 30 or 40. It could be, it could be more. So thank you this evening for being part of this meeting. So let me just read the logistics real quick. Due to the ongoing national and state public health emergency caused by the global coronavirus pandemic, city of New London public meetings will be held virtually. Meeting agendas can be found at www新LondonCT.org. An audio recording of this meeting will be posted on the city website within seven days of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted in writing to jstart@newlondonct.org. If you prefer, you may sign up to speak at the following link on the city of New London website, This link will bring you to a fillable form where you may submit your name, and you'll be added to the public comment list and called on via Zoom during the public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment must be submitted in writing or your name submitted on the fillable sign-up from our city website at least 15 minutes prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. Please include your address in your written public comment submission. So with that said, thank you. I'm going to call on the mayor. There's a recognition and presentation at this time. And I'll pass it on to him. Go ahead, Mayor Pastoral.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Good evening, members of the council. I would like to recognize upon her retirement from years of service in our planning commissions for the city. I say commissions because she served on both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is Ian Keating, a remarkable and devoted public servant to the city of New London. She served on the Planning and Zoning Commission from its origin and founding here in the city of New London. And that was back in 1981. And she served through the 80s until she resigned. She was then appointed in 1991 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. She eventually was elected chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals in 2006. And she continued there until her resignation just this past month. In 2000, she was recognized for her service by the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies with a length of service award. And again, in 2012, when the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zonings recognized her with their 25-year length of service award. I'd like to note that our staff in the zoning department downstairs obviously has worked very closely with Ms. Keating and has acknowledged their commitment to her, their, the appreciation that they have for her, and everything they taught, that she was able to teach the staff. This is just a remarkable leader in our community. And I think she, I wish we, in this virtual world, you know how we'd be doing this with a presentation and all of that. I can assure you that we will get Mrs. Keating a suitable plaque for her long years of service to our city. So on behalf of a grateful city, Ian Keating, thank you for your service. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pastoral. I also would also add the same thing. Thank you, Mrs. Keating, for a long service to our city. You are greatly appreciated. And is there any other counselor that wishes to say anything else?
I should note that Sergeant Keating is Ian Keating's son. Sergeant Keating, we are very proud of your mom.
Yes, we are, sir. Thank you, Sergeant Keating. Yes, we are, sir, thank you, Sergeant Keating.
Thank you very much for taking the time to do that.
You're welcome, sir. Alright, so at this time, um, there is no public hearings, uh, minutes of the previous meetings. I need a motion for that. Counselor Burke, go ahead, alright.
Prove the regular meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Second, uh, is there any discussion? Okay, see a nun, alright, let's vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say nay. Okay, the motion carries, thank you. Alright, at this time, we're gonna have public comment, uh, please make sure that when you are speaking to state your name and address. Also, you have a three minute, um, three minutes, it'll be three minutes given allotted to you, uh, at the one minute mark. When you have one minute left, uh, City Clerk Ayala will let you know, and then obviously when you have ten seconds left, you can start closing, alright, uh, I also wanna remind uh, everyone uh, to always remember to state your name, every councillor, whoever speaks, so that we can record it. And be uh, part of the recording, and know that it's you that's speaking, okay? So with that said, let's have the first one. Hold on. Jenny, did you, you emailed me the information, right?
Yeah, I did, but I can read, the first one is Heather Doughty.
And, and she's here to speak, uh, instead of, or is it a letter?
Here, yeah.
Okay, so let's see, uh, go ahead, Heather Doughty, you can go ahead.
Your call. Thank you, uh, my name is Heather Doughty, I live at nine seventy-five Ocean Avenue. Tonight, I am commenting on CAM seven point two, and will urge you to vote against this action. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to learn more about the Cougar model vehicle obtained by the New London Police Department about six months ago. The presentation was given to a small group of residents by Lieutenant Keating and Officer Cable. There was excellent dialogue about this vehicle and its abilities and optics, as well as challenging questions about how this vehicle is appropriate for New London. My takeaways from the conversation are, one, this is an intimidating and large vehicle that looks like something that would be in, excuse me, in a war zone. However, it's not armed with weapons, and was designed to carry and protect military personnel. Two, New London will use this vehicle for rescue purposes. It will be instrumental in helping residents during flooding, blizzards, tropical storms and hurricanes, and possible extreme violent acts. Three, because this vehicle looks like a military vehicle, it is scary and intimidating. This can be changed by painting the vehicle red to look like all other New London rescue vehicles. And by relabeling it in multiple areas with the word rescue. Smaller emblems of the police and fire department could be placed on it. Four, this vehicle is an insurance policy for our residents. We don't know what will happen in the future, but we will have this vehicle to use when it happens. I urge you to vote no on CAM seven point two, because this vehicle is an important tool for New London and southeastern Connecticut. It was given to us by the military and has minimal operational costs. With a different color, different text, and a lot of education and marketing, the community can embrace this vehicle. Let's hope we never need it, but I am proud of the New London Police Department for obtaining this insurance policy for our residents. Please vote no on CAM point seven two, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doughty, at this time, I'm gonna have Bailey Howard.
Hi, thanks, Bailey Howard, eleven oh seven Ocean Avenue. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss the militarized vehicle, um, and it just seems like a decision that was made in haste. Maybe without the consideration for the impact, um, that equipping our milit, our officers with militarized vehicle would really have on our small community. Um, I think the clear uses and prohibited uses should have been something that we considered before we obtained it. I think the public would feel a lot better, um, had we known what the intent was going into obtaining such a, a vehicle. Um, I think we know that there's a lot going on nationally regarding militarization of police, abuse of power, those sorts of things. And it doesn't feel like those aspects were considered prior, prior to um, obtaining the vehicle. I'm also a little concerned, um, with the remarks made by Counselor Sadai in the earlier meeting, where he said if it's free, it's for me. I think that tone completely disregards the impact of this decision, and I just hope we're taking it a little bit more seriously than that. Um, I guess my, my thoughts are, I see utility in it for inclement weather, um, potentially, but that that responsibility of having a militarized vehicle, um, needs to come with some sort of legally binding regulations that make us feel as a community that it won't ever be a, a potential source for abuse of power. So, is there a legally binding way to say that this vehicle may only leave the lot for these approved purposes that the community has had input into? Is there a way to say only these specific officers with this kind of leveled training, um, will be the ones to put their hands on it? Is there a public uh, notice policy where we will know before it even moves down a street? Um, to me, honestly, I think you could paint it bright purple with polka dots, and people would still see it as militarized vehicle, so um, I love the idea that paint can change everything, but i- it doesn't change the origin of where it came from, or the intent behind those decisions. So, that's, I think, um, where my thoughts are, uh, we need to be a little bit more intentional with our decision making, and not just jump at free military equipment, thank you. Um, so if there's a way that we can be assured that there is a legally binding um, restriction on the use of this vehicle, that's great, but assurances, promises, um, recommendations, guidelines, all of those are not hard policies, so that to me isn't enough for me to say, yes, this does more good than harm. Um, even though we were being told it's going to sit in a lot, where's the guarantee of that, um, for the community members who are concerned? So, that's uh, where I'm coming from, I, I wish we had known what the intent was when this was uh, purchased, or not purchased, but obtained originally. Uh, but now that we're here, I think we need much more transparency and conversation, um, and actual enforceable policy before we can move forward, thanks.
Thank you very much, Bailey, at this time, I'm gonna ask, nope, I'm not gonna ask, I'm gonna read it. Uh, Frida Burigan, let me just find it real quick, and I'll read it. Alright, for Frida Burigan, two forty-six Connecticut Avenue. I would like to offer my support for giving back the military vehicle, we don't need it, this is my view. Over the holiday weekend, I witnessed New London's police officers conducting themselves as public servants and guardians of public safety. I'm sending this letter with a lot of admiration and respect for the work of New London public, New London's public safety officers. On Saturday night, there was some sort of disturbance at the basketball courts in Bartlett Park, catty corner from our house. My husband and I were strolling to family that are from a Chinese ice cream, and stopped to rubberneck and commit for a bit. We observed respect, professionalism, and footwork. Officers were out of their cars and connecting directly with the young people in the park. I would say that there is greater community protection and public safety being built by that sort of face-to-face police work. And the police officer versus young people pick up young people pick up basketball games we have witnessed since the spring than could be, ever be developed from behind or inside our very, our very free, but very expensive armored military vehicle. Just wait until we see it tear up our already pothole, parked streets. Or get the full bill, the fuel bill for one spin around downtown, that thing is not free. Let's give it back and focus on community needs, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna ask, uh, nope, I'm not gonna ask, I'm gonna read it, uh, Cat Goulard. Hold on, give me a minute, so I can find it. Alright. Alright, Cat Goulard, Goulard, excuse me, Cagulod, uh, fifty-four Dow Street. Good evening councillors, I'm writing tonight to ask that you vote no to agenda item seven point two. To declare the armored vehicle military surplus and dispose of it. I submitted comments for the public safety meeting, but would like to, like them read for the record at this meeting as well. Funny councillor is not present at the prior meeting. New London is, is a seaside community prone to weather phenomena of all sorts. In recent years, our city has experienced major blizzards, severe hurricanes, and extensive flooding. In all of these events, we had people trapped and unable to leave their homes, and in some instances, trapped in their vehicles. This armored vehicle allows the police department access to rescue people that would not be able to reach when wind speeds, water depth, and other weather circumstances take normal vehicles out of service. As a lifesaving device, it is invaluable. We have a large elderly population in London, and it can reasonably be expected that there will be medical emergencies during a weather emergency. As the family mem, member of a severely disabled person, my home could one day be the site of one of those emergencies, I expect that when I dial nine one one, we will get a response, even in the severest of weather. Wouldn't you? This armored vehicle will allow for that. I understand that the council and administration are upset that they weren't consulted on the purchase first. To that, I say this, there's no room for hurt feelings when it comes to saving lives. The vehicle is an, is a necessity and must stay in our possession. It can easily and, and inexpensively be repainted, as other cities have done, to not make it look big and scary. Police administration has been very clear that it is intended, that its intended use is to save lives and not to militarize the department. And they should be allowed to do so. It sends a horrible message to both the community and police department personnel when you begin to give away lifesaving equipment. Please vote no to declaring the armored vehicle surplus. The first time this vehicle is used to save someone, I guarantee you will be glad you voted tonight to keep it, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Goulard. At this time, I'm gonna ask for the next speaker, which will be the last one, that's Chris Wright, thank you, Chris, go ahead.
Good evening councillors, um, I am, I actually want, I, I definitely wanna speak to the cougar. But I actually wanna say something before that, which is, these new uh, restrictions regarding public
Uh, you, your, your, your street and everything?
One thirty-seven Ocean Avenue.
Alright, thank you.
These new restrictions regarding public comment, and people needing to go to the city website fifteen minutes ahead of time to then submit, these new restrictions are decreasing opportunities for the public to have voiced. And if city councillors, I mean, in, in normal times, you don't have to show up, you just show up to the city council meeting, and you can still sign up, even if public comment is still going on, oftentimes, as long as public comment has not ended. City councillors have oftentimes been very generous in, in welcoming in public comment. It seems like you all are going down another direction right now, that is not, uh, is not as accommodating as it could be to public comment, which sends the message you don't wanna hear from people. So, I'm, I'm upset about that, uh, like, there's people on the call right now who wanna speak. Uh, and, and are being told they can't, so I, I think that's really upsetting. How badly do you want the people to be involved? You complain when people don't come out, people wanna come out and they can't, so I'm upset about it. Now, let's get on to the cougar, um, is, is anyone giving a one minute warning?
City Clerk, I will give you one minute, so I don't
Okay, thank, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, with regard to the cougar, um, you know, it, it, I, I'm upset on a, a number of levels, so I mean, one thing that I think is really clear is hearing youth voices, and a number of black youth and community uh, leaders have come out, they want it gone. So if New London actually thinks that uh, racism is an issue, then we need to listen to what black and brown leaders are saying and asking for. So, and on that, and just from that place alone, we should get rid of it, we should a hundred percent get rid of it. Um, I think this decl, declaring it surplus is actually a cowardly way of getting rid of it. You're not even actually saying that we don't wanna have a vehicle.
One minute.
Thank you, thank you, we don't wanna have a vehicle that sends the message that uh, the people are the enemy. You're saying, ah, we're just like, we're characterizing it as surplus, it's this, it's this like it, I get it, it's probably like the easiest workaround, but it doesn't, it doesn't make me think many of you have integrity around the issue. Uh, I hear this like, issue of it being used for extreme weather, so I guess in some ways, listening to uh, Bailey Howard's comments. Yeah, if there was a legally binding way in which like, this vehicle could stay solely for the purposes of extreme weather. Not even active shooter, because who do we perceive as active shooters? Oftentimes, right, we know black people get shot for supposedly being an active shooter, and they're not even active shooting. And honestly, would this thing help with school shootings? Like, I think the department needs to be able to spell that out, how would it? If it's really just for helping people, maybe it shouldn't be in the police department, maybe it should be in, in the fire department.
Time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris, at this time, this is President Dominguez speaking. At this time, uh, I am going to ask for, there's no petitions. And now, response to public comment, any councillor that wants to respond to public comment.
President Dominguez, I'll, I'll go first. We want to respond to, to a couple of things that she said, and one of them is, is that this council, true. That this council is, 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 has so much passion around this issue. It is something that we talk about all the time, it is something that we challenge each other on, and we're not, this, the, the, it's on the cam tonight as a surplus. But the reality is, is that, is that councillors, and I'm gonna speak for myself, I do not want to see this thing rolling down our streets, period. It sends the, the, the wrong message to us, it sends, it's not good for community. Uh, you know, th- this whole thing about, I mean, I can go on and on, somebody made a comment, you put, painted purple with polka dots, it's still a taint. So to say that, you know, that we're somehow skirting around this issue by declaring it surplus is just not true. This is a process, this is what we have to do, to get things done at the end of the day. Um, it, I, I am concerned um, with the perception that we are cutting people off from public speaking. Because that is not our intent, so we will go back and we will take a look at you, if, if in fact it is harming individuals to sign up, but once again, we have a process. This is the process, you've got, you gotta submit your stuff fifteen minutes, ten minutes prior to the end of, of a, a signup period. I mean, that, that is how we get through a night of meetings, so you keep that in mind, that, that, you know, it, it, it's, it's unfair, I think to, to generalize the council, uh, when it's just not fact. Thank you, President Dominguez.
President Dominguez speaking, thank you councillor, I mean, President Protemp Matartas, uh, any other councillor which is to respond to public comment? Counselor Sadai.
Thank you very much, thanks to all those that came out and spoke tonight. And, and I will agree with Chris Wright that um, probably needs to be a better process, similar to what we had in council chambers to, to allow, we sure as heck want everybody to have the ability to address that. Um, but mo- most comments were about the milit, the, the military veh, vehicle. Um, I just wish that everybody had an opportunity before making a decision to see uh, Lieutenant, excuse me, Sergeant Keating's presentation. And all the different scenarios where it was used uh, for rescue, uh, and or for police safety. Uh, I would hope that any city councillor that um, says that they support the police, uh, will in fact show their support this evening. Uh, because this, this is a vehicle, um, that not only will be able to help people uh, and, and, and dire needs, uh, but there is times in this community where, or and or other communities where officers have been shot at, and this armored vehicle will protect them. Um, so, uh, if, if we support police, and I know there's some people on this call that do not support police, wanna see us to defund it. Um, I would, I would recommend, um, that you show tonight that you do in fact support what the police chief and what Sergeant Keating was talking about, especially with the presentation that they sent us via email this afternoon. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to, to read that, thank you very much.
Point of order, President Dominguez, I, I need to respond to ca, to Counselor Sadie's comment about that. Uh, I think, uh, I think it's unprofessional, inappropriate to state that if a councillor does not support this, that we do not support the police department. And by the way, this has nothing to do with defunding the police. I, I think it's highly inappropriate. It's a highly inappropriate comment.
President Portemna Tatas, thank you so much. This is President Dominguez speaking. All right, at this time, is there any other councillor that would like to respond to public comment?
This is councillor Dice.
Go ahead, councillor Dice.
Thank you, President Portemna. Councillor Dice, and first of all, you know, Ms. Austin, she mentioned about protection of cyber terrorism and how we can lose our data. And I just think that was, I appreciate her fortitude, how when she sees something that could affect our community, she speaks up. So I want to acknowledge that and say thank you for bringing that to, to our attention so we could be mindful. That would be one of the questions that we need to make sure that all of our information is, is safe because of what's going on. We're all about the internet now that. I also want to put forth, as a, as a person in this community who had the opportunity to work with children, one of the things that we talked about is, is how we're going to protect them. And what concerns me, and I stated this in the meeting, that this information should have been brought up right away. And when we talk about a process and a step, it's really important that we trust each other. That means the department heads, the councillors, the mayor, and trusting each other is when you see something that's going to support and help our community is to speak up and make sure you take the necessary steps to have it brought into our community. And I guess what concerns me, when I first heard about it in the newspaper, I, I don't know if it was the second council meeting or the third, but I brought up, I said, you know what? This, this scares me because of what I see going on in our community. And when I said it scares me, you know, I explained, I said, can we just sell it? Get the money to scrap and put it towards the community center. But then I received an email from the lawyers, from my lawyer, saying, no, 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 no. That is not the steps that you must take. That is not how you do it. So therefore, if I'm put in check when I'm trying to do things, I expect everyone else to follow in line as well. So, you know, I hope that we don't have to use something like that. I, I, I pray that, that we, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's very important that we follow the proper steps and making sure that we're respecting all of our community people. Our, to making sure that they feel comfortable, they have buy-in, they know what's going on. And what's bothering me, they didn't. And neither did I, as a councillor, did not know. So thank you, President Dominguez. This was councillor Dice speaking.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Dice. Any other councillor that wishes to address responsible comment at this time? All right. See none, I'm going to do it quickly. I just want to say just a couple of things. When it comes to the signup, we've been doing this since March. So March, April, May, June, July, August. All right, we have two week, two meetings a month. We put this together, organized it together to make it easier for our administrative assistant. Our agendas are out on Wednesday. The public has it on Wednesday. So they have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, mind you, to either if they want to comment or they want to speak, they just have to get that email to our administrative assistant Jenny Starks. I think we've been doing a good job about it. Last time, previous, previous meetings, we have up to maybe fifty people sign up and speak. And most of them either read, councillors read, or, or we have speakers. So this is working. I mean, so, so when, when, when Chris Wright says something like that, that's, that's not true. You know, we have, we have been given opportunities to everyone to be able to speak at our meetings. Now, when you talk about city chamber, it's different because you have to sign up by seven P M. By seven P M, the administrative assistant gives me the sheet and that's it. Whoever's on that signup sheet, that's who gets to speak. Now, if they come later on and has a councillor, has a president, I, I wish to allow them to speak, then I can do that. But, but there's a protocol. If we don't have protocol and we don't have organization, then we can't run a meeting. So I mean, it's, it's, that's how it works. And it's not there, listen, even the people that can't speak send the email to all the councillors and we will, we will gladly be able to read them. So the reality is that that's what's, that's what hap- that's what's happening is because of this pandemic. I mean, there's other cities, other municipalities that don't allow it. That they don't allow it because of pandemic issues, whatever. But we have, we not only allow speak, but we also allow you to write an email, like to, to, to say or to comment. It's not true. And I think you're misjudging us and, and that's not correct to do since we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So with that said, I, the other thing I want to say is that, you know what? And I'm going to address it. I know that President Portemna Tatas addressed it. But for councillor Sadie to say what he said, that was uncalled for, uncalled for. No one here, councillor Sadie, said that they're against police. I'll say that clearly. No one in this council, including myself, said that we are against police, that we don't support police. I am for accountability. We need accountability. That's what we need. So please don't ever do that again. Because it's embarrassing. And you're putting yourself out there like you're better than us, when we're supposed to be a team. And no one gets to speak for me, sir. So with that said, is there any other councillor that wishes to speak before I move on? All right, at this time, reports and communication. Director of Law, does anybody have questions for the director of law, Attorney Landrigan? Go ahead, councillor Burke.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. This is councillor Burke. Attorney Landrigan, if you could just under the Labour side, number five, just give us an update summary on that.
Yes, Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan. This is just a, an ongoing Labour dispute with the, with the city. There was a preliminary conference that was held within the last two weeks and briefing schedules are, are being entered and the matter is moving forward.
And just that, will councillors continue to receive updates on that as, as, as that litigation moves forward?
This is Jeffrey Landrigan. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Jeff. This is councillor Burke. Nothing for.
Thank you. President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Burke. Any one else? Okay, councillor Sadie, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, councillor President Dominguez, through you to attorney Landrigan. On the general side, number five, school bus parking, reviewed and revised agreement, reviewed maps and photos. I know that for quite some time, the buses were parked down in Fort Trumbull. There were some issues with that. They were then moved to the high school. Or actually, I think they may have actually been moved to the high-rise first. And then there was supposedly some issue there. So they were moved to the high school. I know the high school parking lot is under major renovation. And so that is definitely not a place that we can park the school buses. And I, I noticed that the, the school buses are now parking at the shuttered high-rises again. So are we going to run into another zoning issue regarding school bus parking there as opposed to down in Fort Trumbull where they worked for years?
This is attorney Jeffrey Landrigan, and no, they are based upon the agreement as is and the use of the property and the prior existing use of this parking lot area down there. There are no zoning issues. So the, the buses, as far as I know, are going to be there at the Thames River Apartments until, you know, until they're needed to be put elsewhere.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Sadie. Any other councillor that wishes to address attorney Landrigan or have any questions for him? Okay, see none. We will continue to move on. Thank you, attorney Landrigan.
Thank you.
All right, council committee reports. Councillor Burke.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Yes, the Public Works Committee met earlier this evening. Two motions were passed on to the full council for consideration. One regarding purchase of salt for this year. The other involving, what's the word for it? Involving acquiring solar electricity. They were discussed in committee and they're on the council agenda for this evening.
Thank you, President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Burke. At this time, I will call on councillor Booker.
No. All set.
You're all set? All right, all right. Thank you, councillor Booker. This is President Dominguez speaking. All right. At this time, I'm going to have Mayor's Office Communications. Mayor Pastor, you're on, sir.
Good evening, President Dominguez, members of the council and the community that has joined us. I hope everybody had a wonderful and restful Labor Day weekend. I have to start off with some sad news, which I'm sure most everybody on this call is aware of. And that is, we had the passing of a retired firefighter, Rocco Basilica. His funeral was last Friday. He passed a week earlier. He served the city of New Lon- New London not only as a firefighter, but earlier on as a, in the Public Works Department. His father was a firefighter, Anthony Basilica. His brother is a former mayor. The family has been a part of our community and its political life for many, many decades. And Rocco was certainly a proud member of that family and devoted his life to the service of the city. So I'd like to recognize his service, thank him and thank his family for their sacrifice. I'd also like to thank the Beldon Street neighborhood. They had a community cleanup over the holiday weekend. It was fairly incredible, the, the number of neighbors and people on that street that came out. They did a great job. It was a grassroots effort by that community. But we did support it with Judy Cox, our community coordinator was there. Of course, with her Levi, with her grandson Levi, who does the community cleanup. So it was a great effort and a wonderful morning and into the early afternoon. The Connecticut Maritime Heritage Festival, which has been very successful in this city for a number of years. This would be the weekend that it would, you know, that it would be happening in person. But because of the, you know, the pandemic, quite a bit of it has gone online. But we still have a good deal of, of in-person events that are, you know, that are taking place. So I would encourage everybody to check out the, the schedule of events. The festival starts Friday, September eleventh, with a nine eleven ceremony at the Nautilus Museum in Groton. And I would, I would like to, I really, because of the amount of work that's put in, I'd like to thank the members of this committee for the work that they put in. I hope I don't leave anybody out. There was like a rotating group of people who served as chair and that would be Eleanor Marianni, former mayor of the city of Groton, Marion Galbreth, and our harbor master, Dave Crocker. And the other members of this committee, they worked very hard, meeting monthly to get ready for this and then weekly in the weeks leading up to it. And I think they have staged a really remarkable event. So I, I would encourage everybody to take part in any part of it that they can. But I want to thank Sue Bergeron, Lee Palumbo, Ed Chalet, Kevin Kavanaugh, our former mayor, Barbara Neff, our waterfront coordinator, Pete Harry, Bruce McDonald, Joe Girardi, Chris Zenden, and Ellie Roy. So thank them all for putting this together. I hope, I hope you all have an opportunity to take part in some of those events, both live and, and virtual. The census is still going on. I have to mention the census. Please, please, we're down into the final two or three weeks. It ends at the end of September. We can't count on any kind of an extension at this point. So the complete count committee just held their weekly meeting today. Still charged up, still working hard. We need everybody's help to encourage anybody that has not yet completed their census to please do it. It is our financial future and the future of our political representation for the next ten, ten years. Can't tell you how important it is. We've gone over it, so I won't take any more of your time. I want to thank Heather O'Connor and all of her volunteers for the backpack back to school giveaway that she did on September first at Toby May Park. That was also a great community event. The turnout was tremendous. A lot of happy, smiling children going away with backpacks full of back to school supplies. And I, I do want to tell you, it seems like an eternity since our last council meeting, somewhere around the middle of August. But since then, as you know, we, we had the food distribution down at Fort Trumbull and, and up at the Garfield Mills. And I want to thank once again the Connecticut Food Bank for that. I hope we can have an event like that put together pretty quickly here as the food insecurity during this pandemic is, is still an important, a significant issue in our community. You know, finally, I'll wrap up with this. We have on the phone today and I'll welcome him to probably his first meeting of the city council of New London, and that's John Board. He is the chairman of New Britain Pride. I can tell you that the resolution that, there's John waving to you. He was also wanted to speak with you during a public comment, but didn't understand the process. At any rate, I'd like to thank John. He, he encouraged the drafting of the resolution that's on your agenda for consideration tonight. And that's under eight point three. I want to thank the members of the council that worked with me to put that together. And also Kia Baird from Out C T, whose advice was invaluable on that, on that resolution. And if appropriate, when you get to that, perhaps you can hear from John Board. But, but I thank you for considering that resolution. And I won't take up any more every time. We have a really packed agenda tonight. So President Dominguez, unless there's questions, that will be my report.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Mayor Pastor. Are there any questions for the mayor, councillors? Okay, see none. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Yep. All right, at this time, we have consent agenda.
Consent agenda, yep, six point zero. That the consent agenda proposal set forth of the regular meeting of, I'm sorry, today is September eighth, twenty twenty, or either one, except for the record, two, referred to committee named, three, waived from committee to be acted upon as proposed, or four, consented to.
Need a second?
This is councillor Burke. I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Burke. This is President Dominguez. At this time, I'm going to be reading off. Just make sure, please councillors, to state your name so I could hear you and write you down if you pull one of the items, right? So seven point oh unfinished business, seven point one A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L. All right, seven point two. Okay, councillor Booker? Seven point two, okay, hold on. Thank you, sir. Seven point three, A. Okay.
Pull both A and B.
Councillor Sadie. Yes.
Councillor Sadie, correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay, eight point O, new business, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four. Is that you councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, eight point three.
Yes, sir. Eight point three councillor Goodwin. Eight point four, eight point five.
Councillor Sadie would like to play eight point four.
Counselor Sadi would like to play eight point four.
That Counselor Goodwin, that was Counselor Sadi.
Either or.
Okay. All right, Counselor Sadi, eight point five.
Eight point four for me.
And eight point four for you? Yeah, of course. Oh, eight point four for you? Okay. Counselor Goodwin. And then Counselor. Sadi, eight point five.
No, Sadi pulled eight point four. But it was very.
So I put him down, eight point four. So where, yeah.
I, I did not pull eight point five.
I thought, yeah, I thought I heard you. Well, that's okay. If you say you didn't.
I was.
So, hold on. So I'm going to go with eight point five. Is anybody pulling eight point five? Okay, so we'll proceed. Thank you. Eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight point nine, eight point ten, eight point eleven, I'm going to pull that. Okay. All right, eight point twelve, let me take it up in executive session. Nine point oh.
Counselor Dominguez, are you going to pull eight twelve?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm going to pull eight point twelve. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. Nine point oh, no appointments. Oh, yeah, there is. I'm sorry, nine point oh, is anybody pulling that? Oh, ten point oh, executive session, executive session, I'll pull that.
A and B, Counselor.
Yes, sir. Yep, A and B. All right, eleven point zero German, okay. President Protem Nartartas.
Yes, President Protem Nartartas, all items having the unanimous support of the City Council are hereby adopted with a single roll call vote. The motions are seconded. The chair calls the roll and the chair declares the motions to be unanimously voted and adopted.
So moved.
Are you looking for a second?
No, he has a second. I think we lost him.
Hello?
There we go.
I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry. Okay, yep. I don't know what happened. Something. All right. So we have a second already? All right, Counselor, I mean, City Clerk Ayala, go ahead.
Counselor Dice.
Yes.
Counselor Sadi.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Booker.
Yes.
President Protem Nartartas.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Counselor Booker Jr., I'm sorry, couldn't get on.
There's some noise in the background from someone's screen.
All right, Counselor Booker, is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seven yes.
Didn't say Counselor Goodwin.
Oh.
Oh, geez.
Counselor Goodwin, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say yes.
Yeah, I said yes.
President Dominguez, that's seven yes.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on, but all right. So, all right, so let's start with, please remember, councilors, this President Dominguez speaking, when you, when is your turn? Make sure you move to cam and wait for the second. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Sadi, I believe, seven point three. Seven point two, I'm sorry, Counselor Sadi.
No, Counselor.
No, Counselor, Counselor Booker. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, President.
Thank you. No, thank you, Counselor Dice. Counselor Booker, you're on, seven point two.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Move the cam, seven point two.
Have a second, guys?
Counselor Dice, second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actions of the Public Safety Committee as its meeting of September 8th, 2020, the City Council hereby authorizes the President of the Council on behalf of the Council to send a letter to the city administration requesting that it make a finding that the city Cougar model armored vehicle be declared surplus property under the city's purchasing ordinances and that said vehicle be sold or disposed of. Okay, through you, President Dominguez, to Sergeant Keating. Thank you, Sergeant Keating.
You're welcome.
So there were a few questions that I had that I, you know, that I didn't get around to asking those questions. So how many calls has New London Police Department received in a major storm such as a hurricane or a blizzard that they would not respond to but could have if they had this vehicle?
Fortunately, that number is, is hard to quantify. I know for sure there was one during Sandy where called and asked to be evacuated and we were unable to do it. The problem with that, trying to quantify that is we don't keep records on who calls and asks for help and we can't provide it. We keep records on who officers are dispatched to go help. So whether we got one or 50, there's no way that I can find to chart that.
So the question was asked by several community members, you know, during a presentation that we had, you know, this past weekend. And, and still not having answers to the question is troubling. You know, if the New London Police Department annually invest money in training and maintenance, correct? So we need to know the impact it will have on our community. If, is this, is the investment and impact on the community worth the cost?
I understand. I know, like I said, eight, which was mentioned, the roads were closed for four days. I know back in 2013, Pequot Avenue was like a day or day and a half maybe from Montauk Avenue down before it was plowed. So I think if people know we have this equipment available, they will use the resource. I believe right now people just are used to the fact that no one can come help them.
Chief Riker, any comments? Can we answer those questions?
I, I agree with what Sergeant Keating said. We don't quantify, you know, who called for help during a storm. We have the ability to query it and go back at certain time periods and look at the types of calls for service that came in. I was present in New London during Hurricane Sandy. The south end of the city was decimated. I was working in the Emergency Operations Center for the city at the time and we did not have the ability to be on, actively be on the road to actually go out and assist anybody because of the high winds and the tree limbs falling down. Most recently, we had a similar incident in early August where we had a tropical storm come in and it whipped through with high winds during the course of an afternoon and decimated parts of the city when power was out for, you know, weeks in some parts of the city. We, during storms, the equipment that we currently use, someone asked me the other day about that. I said, it's the same version of the vehicle you get at the Ford dealership, but ours is stripped down. They're heavy duty. They just have some emergency equipment in them. We, we basically, we don't have the ability with the equipment we presently have to go out and do some of these important missions that are tasked with us at certain times. One other aspect of this is financial. I sat down in the city council meeting. I watched all city councillors spend 1.3 million dollars to brand new fire apparatus. Do we want to destroy those during bad weather storms or we take something that we got for free and send it out there to be used? And if something happens to it, it was minimal cost to the city as opposed to having a million dollar piece of apparatus out of service till it can be replaced. So public safety wise, I am the one who said we should look at having a vehicle such as this in our arsenal so we can get out there and we can protect people in the city and we can save lives.
I don't have any questions at this moment. Thank you very much, Chief Riker.
You're welcome.
And Sergeant Keating, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, President Dominguez speaking. Any more discussion on this before we vote from any other counselor?
Okay.
I, I would like to make comments.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Sadi. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, my recommendation would be that given the fact that I've heard a lot of people have not received the information that was put out by Sergeant Keating, a motion to table may be in order at this juncture. I'm not even sure if every counselor had the ability to read through the multitude of pages that were sent out and all the positive aspects that this vehicle could be used for. So, and I don't know how to ask other, I mean, I guess I could have texted to see if everybody read the full packet. And I think it's a very informative packet. And I would recommend that everybody, including community members, get an opportunity to see all the valuable assets of this vehicle prior to getting rid of it. So when the time comes, I, I plan to make a motion to table.
Is there anybody else going to speak, Counselor Dominguez, or Counsel, President Dominguez?
President Dominguez, thank you, Counselor Sadi. Is there any other discussion, further discussion before Counselor Sadi motions to table?
Yeah.
I see. Okay, yep. Let me go back to Counselor Booker Jr. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez.
You're welcome.
You know, the reason we have so many conflicting perspectives is because there was fundamental upfront mistrust presented on behalf of the police department and the community in the beginning. When the Cougar vehicle, also known as the rescue vehicle, was available, the police department did not present the evidence, the, the, the city council, nor the mayor before it obtained the vehicle. So as a result, this created distrust between the two parties that really should be acting as one community, as we all know right now. And even though the vehicle is presented by the police department as something that will rescue people when they are in danger, it is difficult for the community to believe that this vehicle would not only be used as such. We see vehicles just like this, one breaking up protests that have happened across the country this summer. The vehicle is not seen as a rescuer, but a object of intimidation. However, I see the importance of a rescue vehicle. And I'm going to make this very clear tonight. I see you smiling, President Dominguez. But I do not.
Because you're smiling.
I know. I do not like the image of the vehicle and what it symbolizes. I want to make that very clear. I have done my due diligence in meetings several times with Sergeant Keating and brought in a group of community members on, you know, on this, this, on this issue in the vehicle, speaking with Sergeant Keating. And I want to thank you, Sergeant Keating, for taking that time and, and, and helping us understand this vehicle a little bit more. You know, I have been volunteer for the Red Cross and I, and I have been deployed to help hurricane disasters where big hurricanes like this were needed. And, and seeing people, you know, in dire need. So I do know the, ish the importance of having a rescue vehicle. You know, and it's, it's, it's torn. And I'm, and I would like to see more process in this, in this, in this discussion. Because I feel like some things have not been, you know, processed enough. And I agree with many of my fellow counselors here tonight that we needed to be, you know, we needed the information earlier. And that's a fact. And, and many of us know we needed to know earlier. And, and, and that's why, you know, when you look at this situation, you know, it's like you're, you're in some aspects, you're just like, you know, for, if you go one way for your, for our community, it's like, with, you know, I'm for the police and I'm, and I'm not against the police, as many of the counselors have said and emphasized earlier. But the reality is, is that this is a vehicle that needs to be vetted a little bit more. And we need to understand, because I think about these disasters and I think about the environment, but I also think about my community and also the effects that this can have on my community as well. So I just wanted to make that very clear. You know, as, as a, as a leader within this community, that this is something I had to take my time to do diligence as a volunteer for the Red Cross, as a person, that's why I took my time to meet with Sergeant Keating to really understand this vehicle. So it's, 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 it's a really tough situation because I can see being a person who has been in those issues where I'm rescuing people, it's hard. You know, people have a dire need and they, and when they, when I was in Puerto Rico for those two months, I saw so many people who did not receive the help that they needed because of flood situations. And it was, it was serious. And, and they were stating in Puerto Rico during that time, yes, there was a thousand people, but I saw dead bodies that I, that I had to help and get those dead bodies and put them on those vehicles. So this is, this, I just wanted to voice my opinion on this. I just wish we had more time to really process this and go through this and go through our whole process just to vet it a little bit more. That's all I wanted to say with all my heart and soul. So I'm not, not against the police, I'm for the police and I'm, and I'm for my community as well. But I just wish we had a little bit more time to vet this process. That's all. And thank you very much.
This is President Dominguez. You are more than welcome, Counselor Booker. Let me just say this to you. You are the Public Safety Chair. So I'm glad that you did.
Correct.
That's right. I'm glad so that you did your due diligence and, and you did what you had to do. Because that's, that's your job. That's your role. So thank you for doing that. At this time, let's go to Counselor Dice.
Let me make sure I'm off to, so Counselor Dice, thank you, President Dominguez. What I'm concerned about is what would we have in place to make sure that this equipment is only used for hurricanes or emergencies? And what can, you know, we need an audience and we need to have something in place. And I want buy-in from the community. I'm serious. We did not educate our community if it was going to be, if there was, goal was for it to be for safety. So if we take a step and, and, and table it, I want to make sure that this information, the, you know, the, um, the PowerPoint is getting out to the community on the website where anybody can look at it. I want to make sure if people got questions or the, or concerns, they can pick up the phone and call. Because look, this is, this is serious and we need everyone buy-in. And you're right, it was done through mistrust. We're really not following procedure. This is a business. And the reality is, it wasn't followed. So that's why we're at this stage. We would not have been at this point right now. So I think that's very important. It's not about her feelings, it's about following procedure and making sure that we're, that everyone that's supposed to know, know. That's really, was, it just caused mistrust. When you don't notify your boss, it's mistrust. So this is Counselor Dice speaking. Thank you, President Dominguez. Thank you.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, Counselor Dice. Anyone else that wants to have any further discussion? All right. See you none. All right, let's go to Counselor Sadi. Counselor Sadi, I know you have a motion you want to.
Yep, thank you. Thank you very much, President Dominguez. This is Counselor Sadi prior to making the motion. I would just like to ask my fellow counselors to listen to those counselors that have asked for the opportunity to fully vet this. Having said that, I'm going to make a motion to table this until the first meeting in October.
Thank you.
Counselor Booker, did, this President, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, that's why. All right, so Counselor Booker seconded, all right? Okay, so now we're going to do the vote. And the vote, I want to make this a roll call vote. So City Clerk Ayala, whenever you're ready.
Counselor Goodwin.
No.
Counselor Burke.
Counselor Burke.
No.
Counselor Sadi.
Yes.
President Protemp Natarzis.
No.
Counselor Dice.
Counselor Dice, you have the.
Hold on, hold on, Counselor, hold on, I got this, thank you, let her take her time.
I'm sorry, I didn't know my mic was off.
Yeah, you're on.
I did say yes.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Booker Jr.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
No.
Four no, three yes.
Okay, motion fails. All right, so now let's move to vote on it. Okay, that said, all right. Same thing, City Clerk Ayala, call it out.
President Protemp Natarzis.
Yes.
Counselor Dice. Counselor Dice.
Excuse me, sorry, yes, excuse me, I didn't realize, yes.
Okay. Counselor Sadi.
No.
Counselor Booker Jr.
No.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you, sir, this is President Dominguez speaking, the motion carries. Okay, 7.3, Counselor Sadi.
Move to cam.
Can I have a second, this is President Dominguez speaking. Was that? Yes, thank you, sir.
City Council approves the request from the Director of Public Works to authorize the mayor to enter into a non-binding letter of intent with Commercial Solar Works to allow Green Skies Clean Energy and Standard Solar to submit their project and secure a queue in the state virtual net metering program and negotiate a 20-year power purchase agreement. Through you, to our Director of Public Works, Brian Seer. The first part of the cam talks about allowing two companies to submit. I'm assuming in reference to the city of New London's need. It then talks about and negotiated 20-year power purchase agreement. Who is that power purchase agreement going to be negotiated with?
Each of those companies individually.
Well.
Director Brian Seer, the purchase agreement would be negotiated between the city and Green Skies and Standard Solar.
So would they both be servicing our needs? To let them go into a state website?
I couldn't hear you, John.
Okay, so it talks about a letter of intent with Commercial Solar to allow Green Skies and Standard Solar to submit their projects and secure a queue. But then it goes on to say and negotiate a 20-year. So my understanding of this motion is if we vote in the affirmative, is to allow them to have their name submitted to a queue.
Correct.
And then I would, and this is a state queue, so I'm assuming the state would then give one of the two an opportunity to negotiate with us?
No, the way this is broken out, John, is the, or Counselor, is that they took our accounts, which are by building, okay? So they took our buildings and they matched the electrical need of each building to the projects that were available, okay? So Green Skies has a project that's going to have enough solar to cover and it is in your packet. It's most of the schools and one of the accounts from the water treatment facility. So they have a certain amount of kilowatts of a certain nature that's going to match nicely with those accounts. And Standard Solar has a smaller project or a part of a project that's going to match nicely with the second half of the water treatment facility. So Green Skies can't handle them all. There's a small part that is going to fit what Standard Solar is putting together. So it's kind of like a puzzle and most of the pieces are going to fit into Green Skies project. And then there's an extra piece that's going to fit into Standard Solar's project. And that's why they're both involved.
And again, this is a non-binding letter of intent, is that correct?
That's the way. That is correct, there is no obligation in the letter, but we need to, the state needs to know that the city is very knowledgeable about and in good faith, committed to the concept of being part of the virtual net metering.
And it's not. And an affirmative vote will just allow them to get into the queue and negotiate with us, but the full contract still has to come back to us for approval, is that correct?
That's absolutely true.
I have no further questions, Counsel President Dominguez, thank you very much.
President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Counselor Sadi. Any other counselors with any questions? Or comments or discussion? Okay, we'll see you none. Let's vote on this, okay? All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries, thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move to Counselor Goodwin. 8.3.
8.3, City Council approves, move to him.
Point of order, President Dominguez, this is Counselor Burke, I believe Counselor Sadi had polled 7.3A and B.
Yes.
Good point, Counselor Sadi, did you, go ahead, Counselor Sadi.
7.3B, move to cam.
This is Counselor Burke, I will second.
City Council approves request of Director Public Works for the purchase of 2,000 tons of treated salt and champion salt at a price of $63.86 per ton for a total of $127,720. Funding will come from town aid, road storm supplies account. There was a second that, and I apologize, I pulled this on accident.
That's okay. President Dominguez speaking, Counselor Sadi, do you have any questions or comments or can we just vote?
Unless somebody else has questions.
Yeah, well, all right, let me just, because I always allow the first, the ones that pose it first. So any other counselor? Have any questions or comments regarding 7.3B treated salt contract? Okay, see you none, goes back to you, Counselor Sadi.
Yes, no, I have no further questions, I'm ready to vote.
All right, sir, thank you very much, all right, at this time, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, the motion carries. All right, at this time now, 8.3, that's Counselor Goodwin.
Move to him.
Second, I'll second it.
All righty, City Council approves resolution 0980-01, resolution supporting the Equality Act, HR 5119, Congress affirming and declaring the city's commitment to respect and protect the civil rights of LGBTQ+ community and endorsing adoption of the Equality Act now pending before Congress. Through you, Council President, I just wanted to allow any members of LCT and/or Mr. John Board a chance to speak on such a resolution, I thought it'd be most appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Mr. John Board, are you available and willing to speak on this measure?
Yes, sir, good evening, Counselor, good evening, Mayor, if you're still there, and Mr. Council President, good evening, I'm just here as a resource for members of the council, if they have questions. This is an effort that we've been doing all over the state to get all 169 municipalities on board. If this council adopts the resolution this evening, you guys will be number five. We are in active talks with over 20 municipalities right now. And if any counselors have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, thank you.
I will yield the floor if there are counselors that have any questions with regards to this.
Yes, I do. Let me just address real quick, this question is for Mr. Board. Now you said there's, you have five, if we accept it, we'll be number five?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And then you said you have, it's going to 20 other municipalities?
So we're in active talks with 20 other municipalities. What I mean by that is that we are talking with the respective municipal CEOs or they are in a queue to be on a future legislature body agenda.
Okay.
But we've sent emails out to all 169 municipalities and we're also going to get the state on board with sending out emails to both our executive as well as legislative. Thank you.
President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Mr. Board.
President Dominguez, if there are no other questions from council, Mr. Board, I want to thank you for working with LCT and the mayor on behalf of the council, just thank you for all the work that you're doing advocating for those that lack proper representation and/or relevance at the table. So thank you and I am proud to support this tonight. If there are no further questions, I give the floor back to you, Counsel President.
President Dominguez, yep, thank you, President, this is President Dominguez speaking, thank you, Counselor Goodwin, and also thank you, Mr. Board. At this time, where if there's no other questions or further discussion, we're going to vote, all right? So, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Booker, is that, you have a question or comment?
Just a quick comment.
Okay.
Mr. Board, I just want to thank you very much for this act. Thank you so much for all your work you're doing and moving this forward. And I'm really looking forward to even voting on this, voting in favor of this, this is so great. So thank you very much for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor.
This is President Dominguez, for the record, that was Counselor Booker speaking. All right, so at this time, let's, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. At this time, Counselor, I have Counselor Goodwin for 8.4.
Yes, I'm beyond excited.
Thank you, sir.
Move to him.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Sadi has seconded.
Counselor Sadi, City Council authorizes the mayor to apply to the Eastern Region Tourism District for a 2020 Regional Marketing Partnership Program grant for $25,000 with a required $25,000 match from the previously appropriated Community Development Fund proceeds from parcel J for a total project budget of $50,000. This will support the development and installation of a Black History Heritage Trail and to support the pop-up shop program. So just really quickly, just want to say thank you to the mayor's office administration as well as to Director Reyes of ODP for his collaboration on this. I am beyond excited today, one of the first plaques or markers actually came in for Igbog Pease, who was a former slave here in New London, who once freed, was able to start the first black school here in New London at the age of roughly approximately 81, so that's the first of many other markers to come on a walking tour. I will let Director Reyes give you an overview of quickly of both projects and if there are any questions, we'll quickly go on that, but I just want to say thank you to the administration indirectly to Director Reyes because during a time such as now and any time, this is just incredible chance for the city to have a well-rounded, you know, history options and for folks to learn about our inclusive history. So thank you, Director Reyes.
Sure, thank you, Counselor Goodwin, first, just wanted to take a moment, I know a lot of teachers and students are going back to school, so just want to take a moment to reflect and know that our hearts and prayers are all with our students and our teachers this evening, I know a lot of households are under anxious nerves and uncertainty. So we're all in this together, so just wanted to just bring that up, I thought it's important to mention tonight. In regards to what's on the council agenda, this is something that that the city has wanted to do for a while and it always takes, you know, the proper leadership to kind of make it come to fruition and actually make it happen, so I want to thank Curtis Goodwin for for essentially staying on top of something that should have been done years ago and saying, well Felix, how can we make this happen? We all want it to happen, but how do we make it happen? And with the partnership with the Parking Authority and Cary Redd, we found some funds to order the first plaque, brown plaque, then as Mr. Goodwin mentioned, arrived this afternoon to mark the location of the first black school in New London. And that's just one of numerous sites of black history. And we've tossed a ton of names, but we're calling it the Heritage Trail for now, but I'm sure we'll come up with the appropriate name for this. We have several tours and guides and I see Nicole Thomas on tonight and she's one of our kind of local residents who leads a lot of these tours and knows a lot of the history in New London. And they exist, but we don't have a tour that's properly marked and where history is, all the due diligence on the history and actually someone actually making sure that all the the history is correct and accurate. So the time is now to do it. I think we have the right leadership in place, it's the right climate in our community to do it and it's long overdue. So the tourism grant is a rolling grant that just came out recently and I thought it's absolutely appropriate to apply for this grant to fund not only this project, but the pop-up store project, which I'll talk next. And the Heritage Trail is, to me, is part of tourism, it's storytelling. It's, you know, I've always felt that one of the biggest issues that we've always run into is that we don't control our story and this is how we do that. This is how we control the narrative, it controls the story of our history and gives us the opportunity to make sure that we're telling accurate history of the city and of the residents, the diverse residents that lived here and the exceptional people that have come to into New London, like a Frederick Douglass. Those are moments and times that should be captured and spoken about to our children's children, to our school systems and those are things that the city should be known for and respected for. So that's the Heritage Trail. Right now, we're looking at 15 locations, which we can increase, we can change, but that's about how big the tour would be. We hope that it's going to be on the city's app that will be coming out this fall. It will have a queue code on it where folks can scan each of the plaque and markers and learn a lot more about history of the location of the people involved. Because it's not just about a location, it's really about the people that came through New London or were part of this community. And I think that's the overall goal and I think we've got some good partners in place. I certainly don't take much of the credit, but I put a lot of credit to the community that's been wanting this and is advocating for this for a long time and the people that have been doing it already. New London Landmarks has the board and has a system in place right now where they are going to put the right people to task and make sure that this is a fully, each site is fully vetted, that we're doing the proper research and the information is there. So there's a process in place to make sure everything is accurate. So we have that in place, I'd like to thank them and their volunteers. So that's to do with the Heritage Trail. And it is, as Curtis mentioned, it's a 50% match, so we feel that the money that we have in our Economic Development Fund, which is around $40,000 left from our sale of parcel J, to use a portion of this to make sure that this becomes a reality within the next fiscal year. So that's the Heritage Trail. The pop-up, the pop-up shop store is an incentive and is a program that the both Arc and Economic Development Office and our Long-Term Recovery Committee is working on, on collaboration with city-centered district, our building owners in downtown. And the pop-up store initiative is essentially what it is. It's a program that creates. Um, and the pop-up store initiative is essentially what it is. It's, it's a, it's a program that creates a very low-risk opportunity for businesses, businesses to come to New London where rent um, is below market. Um, the, um, the leases, the leases that will be signed are temporary. Um, and uh, and there's incentives in place, um, where the, um, where, where signage and, 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 and and I, I would say kind of like that white glove service, uh, to make sure that entrepreneurs um, have um, a space, a commercial space to take up one of our uh, many storefronts, our available storefronts in downtown to show off um, their latest creation, um, uh, um, inventory, um, or if they just want to pilot, um, whether they want to pilot food. Um, so there's, there's, there's numerous opportunities there. But we don't have a program in place for these entrepreneurs to really find a place um, in downtown um, where they can do something temporary. And the whole goal and the hope is, is that that temporary pop-up shop turns it to something long-term. Um, so the, the money really is um, for rental assistance, um, and some, some marketing um, dollars to make sure that these entrepreneurs. Um, and, and the goal is, when I say entrepreneurs, I mean, we'd love to have some New London folks really take up these storefronts. Folks that are, you know, doing business out of their homes, um, whether it's jewelry or baking cupcakes, um, to say, hey, listen, I, I, you know, let's, let's try to get you down in a commercial space on Bang Street, on State Street, um, and see how it works out. And it's at a very low risk. Um, I think that's gonna um, allow for more opportunities that a lot of the entrepreneurs are looking for, especially in this economic climate. It would also give opportunities for those that have gone out of business recently and gives them an opportunity to get back into business. Um, so this pop-up program is a collaborative of many departments. Um, so the, the, the money that we're asking for tonight is to really uh, make sure that this program is in place. It's, it's um, um, it's living and breathing, meaning that there is no end, there's no end date, um, um, to it. Once the program is in place and as long as the program is funded, uh, we can continue to offer that um, to business owners as an option for those that are unsure of signing long-term leases. Um, so um, I know I said a lot, but I think there's, um, there's, 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 it's, 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 there's some, a couple of good initiatives, some, some some really good things that the, the city and that the local residents are working on that's worth, um, getting out there. So people know that, you know, a lot of efforts going into this. So, Mr. Goodwin, I appreciate, um, you pulling this and giving me the opportunity to explain a little bit more detail, and I'll be happy.
Well, worked the time to note such amazing opportunities coming out of this, and thank you for mentioning Nicole's on the phone as well as landmarks. I did forget to mention the community partners involved. Uh, President Dominguez, if there's questions, I'll give the floor back to you.
Thank you, sir. President Dominguez speaking. At this time, does anybody have any questions or comments? Councillor Sadie, I see your hand. Go ahead, sir.
Who you, I'm assuming, uh, to Director Reyes. Um, first, I'd like to say that this is a wonderful idea and I support it. Um, but it talks about a budget, and this is in the Connecticut Mystic County uh, letter or, or about um, a, a budget of a hundred eighty thousand. Is that the whole, the total budget for this Mystic County?
Correct. It's a, it's a, it's a competitive rolling grant.
Okay, that, that's all I needed to know, because I, I, the next question is going to be, um, is our budget for the plaques, I believe is eighteen thousand. Um, I believe it was, well, for the plaques and other stuff, but the uh, plaques were eight hundred apiece. Twelve of them, I think it came out to fifteen thousand. Bear with me, let me get that page. Um. Yeah, so fifteen marker plaques at eight hundred piece for twelve thousand, a website for two thousand and research four thousand for a total of eighteen thousand. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Um, did you need more information on the numbers, on why, how we got there?
Well, on, on that part, I do, because it says a, a two-to-one match for the first five thousand. A, a one-to-one match for up to fifteen thousand and a cap of twenty-five thousand. So I'm assuming if they give us the first five, we pay ten. If they give us the next fifteen, um, we match that with fifteen.
Correct. So, um, the way, the way I understood it, when we met, when we go for the, the max, the twenty-five thousand, um, it's a one-to-one. That's, that's the understanding that I have when I, when I reached out to them. The twenty-five thousand will be a one-to-one match.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the way I'm reading it is that they're going to put in twenty, and we're going to put in twenty-one, from what I see on this letter. Um, so that, that's the first part. And, you know, we, we talk about, um, the chicken before the egg. Um, I happen to be up on, uh, Mount Nav uh, yesterday. Uh, and I happen to be looking at a house thirty-three Mount Nav. And as I was looking at the house, this uh, Ichabod uh, Pease plaque was already there. So we've already started this project, but the council has not approved the funding, or how's that working?
Uh, this is, um, I, I, I refer to on, 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 on Mountain Avenue, I'm, I'm, perhaps Landmarks was doing something uh, separately. Um, but this, this marker.
You're breaking up? Sorry, now I can hear you.
So is that a location of the string?
So, oh, the, the plaque that we're authorizing here, where, where is it? Because it, I thought that one said thirty-seven Mount Nav.
Good, Curtis, you're gonna have to take over.
Yeah.
Because of, because you're not coming across.
Yes.
So councillor Goodwin here, um, councillor Sadie, there is no current plaque in the actual physical ground anywhere. Um, this. You saw something.
Block yesterday at thirty-three Mount Nav.
But that has absolutely nothing to do with this project. The plaque that we have that's in hand is to actually go where the exact school was located. So we are focused on the actual school and this particular part of the story of this trail. So where this school was, that's where it'll go, behind Salvation Army.
And where was the school?
Behind Salvation Army, right behind there.
Okay, alright. So then, my next question is, so I believe that this cam is authoring, authorizing us to spend twenty-five thousand. At least that's what I've read.
Correct.
Now, we then move on to the second part of it, um, which is, uh, the, um, pop, pop-up shop program. And that is requiring an additional thirty-two thousand dollars, which is not in the cam. The, uh, but, the budget sheet for that is marketing of four thousand, rental assistance twelve thousand, events seven thousand, permits and fees two thousand, signage and welcome mats seven thousand. So where's that money coming from? If, if we're not authorized, that, this, this cam doesn't authorize that money.
No, the, um, the cam is asking to match the, the budget is for the cost of the total project, which is fifty thousand dollars. So the cam is the match. So we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars and will be submitted thing for the grant for the other twenty-five thousand dollars, which supports the combined budget of both projects.
Okay, eighteen and thirty-two is, thank you very much. I have no further questions.
President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, councillor Sadie. Alright, any other councillor that wishes to? Alright, okay, councillor Booker, go ahead. You're muted, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to say I'm really glad to see that Tom Such and Lonnie Braxton is part of the project. It was the honor.
Yeah, I don't, sorry councillor Booker, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't know if it's, go, go ahead, start again.
Okay, thank you very much, President Dominguez. Um, I'm glad to see Tom Such and Lonnie Braxton and is part of this project. It was an honor to present with them and on the New London Green Book Project in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and we actually went around and did some speaking on this, so it was an honor to, to work with them. Um, this is a rich investment for our city, making sure the true history is being told. So, Mister, Mister Reyes, Director Reyes, can you shed a little bit of light on the historians and their investment in our city, please?
Correct, um, and I'm glad you brought that up, and it's, it's, it's truly a community effort. Um, and no one's coming to the table as being a professional historian. These are, these are community members that love the history of New London um, and spend a great deal of time, um, uh, during the research, whether it's reading old newspaper clippings, um, literature. Um, the, a- anything they can get their hands on to kind of piecemeal all this together. I mean, because that's what it is. I mean, when you're doing research on this history, I mean, you're doing detective work, and this stuff takes a long time, it's a long, and so it's a, it's a huge commitment because, um, once you sign off on this, and this is why we have the New London Landmarks Board to have an approval process to really go through the guideline, that the storytelling, and does this add up with what the physical evidence that actually um, that we have at hand. Um, and that's really important to make sure that, um, that we're telling the right story. Um, so between the landmarks in the local, what we call, you know, the London historians, really coming together um, and, and, and putting, and then putting this, um, together and having a, an approval process um, um, elimi- eliminates, eliminates, sorry, the risk of making sure that we're not creating stories, um, that are not accurate.
Thank you very much, um, Director, um, Director Reyes was putting a spotlight on that. Also, I wanted to say too, one of the individuals who actually, um, his family was part of the Green Book, Spencer Lancaster, um, he's still alive. And, um, he's part of that, you know, that history within New London, and historians, both of them are New London natives. So it's just, it's just such a great project. So thank you very much for bringing this project to our city.
Absolutely, and Mister Lancaster.
Very much, councillor Goodwin, as well.
And Mister Lancaster was my neighbor growing up as a child, um, of Broad Street, so fondly very respectful of him and, uh, his family as well.
Hey, President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, thank you very much to, uh, councillor Goodwin. Also, New London Landmarks and of course, uh, Director Reyes, uh, looking forward to this, uh, seeing that plaque and not only be able to see it, but also tell my students that there's actually a Black histor- uh, a Black historical, uh, trail uh, Heritage Trail in our midst, in New London in our city, and they can go and, and, and see it and, and learn more about it. So, very, very cool, very exciting. Alright, so with that said, see no other councillors, uh, that want to comment or share anything, we will vote. Alright, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed say nay? Alright, the motion carries. Thank you. Alright, so the next one is eight point eleven. That's me, the task force. Uh, move to cam. Thank you councillor Goodwin, seconded. Alright, uh, I'm very excited about this. Uh, obviously, I think we as councillors, we have, you have heard me, we have spoken about uh, budget and, and, and me being one of the, uh, I guess the longstanding councillors here. I, I've been to many, many, several budgets, and it's always the same thing, you know, it's always at the end. There's, there's all kinds of disagreements. There's all kinds of things that are happening, uh, and I think this, this will be a start of something new. Um, I believe that, you know, in order to be able to produce the very best budget, we need more, we need more eyes on it. So, uh, this task force is going to allow, uh, the president of, of the council with two members that I've selected, and that is, uh, councillor Goodwin and President Protem Rattatas. And also, it's going to allow, uh, president of the Board of Ed Regina Mosley and two, uh, Board of Ed members that she has selected. Uh, Jeffrey Hart, Board of Education Jeffrey Hart member, and also Elaine Maynard. And what we're going to do is, we're going to be able to meet and talk about, uh, the budget from the beginning. From the beginning all the way to be, be, before it comes, uh, and all the way from the beginning to go through uh, dates and goals, uh, to review the budget, uh, and then to prepare recommendations for the mayor and this is, the superintendent of schools for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and two, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. So that's exciting. This has never been done, that I know of, in the history of New London, and I'm looking forward to working in collaboration with the Board of Education, with their, with their members, and also, uh, the members in our council. Uh, so it's exciting. It's, it's something new, uh, and I'm looking forward to it. I think we have always had many disagreements. And, you know, the only time that we see the budget is when either the mayor presents it at the end, and also when the superintendent Ritchie, when she presents it, and we have it, you know, in our hands. And then we have about a month to go over this, so I think this is going to allow more collaboration. And, uh, before I did this, I mentioned it to the councillors, uh, and I, but I also, uh, I told the mayor about it, and he, he gave me the blessing. And also, I spoke to Superintendent Ritchie about it, and she also gave me a blessing to do this. So I'm excited about it. So I, I'm looking forward to this, uh, and, you know, to, to, to bring about some change. Uh, so we can't, so there's no, not out of this fighting, back and forth, and there'll be more eyes on it, and we'll be able to give recommendations. And again, suggestions to both the mayor and Superintendent Ritchie. So with that said, I don't know if any of the other councillors.
Yeah.
Would like to.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, President Dominguez.
Yes.
Uh, President Protem, so listen, I want to, I want to thank you personally for your leadership on this. Like you said, no, this has never been done before. And the objective is, is that we want to open the lines of communication, and we want to collaborate. We don't want to be divided. And only good things can come out of this. So I'm excited to participate on this and looking forward to the dialogue.
This is President Dominguez speaking. Thank you, President Protem Rattatas. Any other councillor that wishes to speak on this? Okay, oh, councillor Burke, I mean, sorry, not councillor Burke, uh, councillor Goodwin.
No, again, just wanted to thank you. I think this is a pivotal moment for us, you know, to embark on such a journey. I think we've all experienced, you know, what happens when we don't communicate ahead of time and/or have a working cohesive relationship or bridge built with the Board of Education. So if there's ever a chance to do that, I think this is the best first step to being able to get to that process. So thank you again for your leadership and excited, uh, to embark on this journey, so we can have a, a better relationship dialogue, a bridge and, you know, more equity there. So thank you.
Uh, this is President Dominguez, uh, speaking. Uh, thank you for those words, councillor, uh, Goodwin. Uh, at this time, see no other, oh, councillor, uh, councillor Booker Junior, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much, President Dominguez as well. Um, this is a great initiative, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it's going to bring communication among the Board of Education as well as the city council, so that we can move, continue to move forward in a positive direction within our city. And to make sure every, we dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So I just want to thank you for this initiative and putting it together. So thanks again, um, awesome, awesome idea, task force resolution. Thanks again for everything.
Uh, President Dominguez speaking. Thank you for your kind words to, uh, councillor Booker Junior, alright? Uh, so at this time, we are going to vote. Alright, uh, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? Great, the motion carries. Okay, at this time, we are, oh, eight point twelve. That's me, Dominguez, uh, move to cam.
I believe we have. This is Jeffrey Landrigan.
Yes.
You, you should take up eight point twelve after the executive session.
Alright, so, alright, so now, uh, executive session, we're going to go into executive session, so I'm going to move that to cam. Can I have a second?
Councillor Burke, second.
Thank you, sir. Alright, councillor Burke, I seconded. Alright, so this is, uh, now, Attorney Landrigan, since I see A and B, we're going to do them separate, right? Are we going to do them sep- we're going to do them separate, right?
Yeah, I think, uh, this is attorney Jeffrey Landrigan. I think what you can do is, we can go into the executive session for A.
Yep.
I see attorney, uh, John, uh, Cannavino, who's on the line here, uh, to, to come in with, uh, the council, myself and Mayor Passero. And then for B, it would be everybody except attorney Cannavino, and I think he could just then exit. So, um, I think you could call them both now, and we'll take up A first, and then let attorney Cannavino.
So let me just read them here. It says, "The city council will meet in executive session with members of the law director's office, insurance, defense council, and all representatives of the mayor's office to discuss the status of pending litigation, naming Stephen Emmerich versus Officer Max Birch." Uh, pursuant to general statute one dash two hundred, parentheses C, uh, parentheses letter B, "Strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation involving the city of New London." And then later on, it'll be B, Gills versus City of New London. "The city council will meet in executive session with members of the law director's office, the mayor, and the city chief administrative officer to discuss the status of pending litigation, namely Paul Gills versus City of New London, pursuant to general statute one dash two hundred, parentheses C, uh, parentheses six, parentheses letter B, strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation involving the city of New London." Okay? Okay?
President Dominguez, I think you just have to ask for, ask for a motion to, or, you know, the motion's been made, if you could take a vote.
So let's take a vote on this to go to executive session.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries, and let's go into executive session.
Dan, do you know who needs to go in?
I have all the counselors and John Cannavino.
Yes, and myself and Mayor Passaro.
Okay.
Perfect.
And for the record, Mr. Landrigan, I guess, for the second executive session, attorney, I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your last name, John, will not be participating. Correct?
That is correct.
So he'll be leaving that one.
Yep. All right, this is President Dominguez, Mr., could you pronounce your name?
Cannavino.
Thank you, sir. Cannavino, thank you.
Okay, we're going to get beamed up.
Yes, we are, here we go.
Thank you, Counselor Dice. All right, no motions were made, no votes were taken. And at this time I will entertain another motion.
Did I miss something?
You have to um.
I already.
Eight point twelve has to be voted.
Uh yeah, I believe that attorney Jeffrey Long, I believe uh Counselor Dice seconded your motion for eight point twelve. So you just need to, roll call vote is fine, it doesn't need.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh yays and nays are fine.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you, the motion carries. All right.
Counselor.
Daddy.
Counselor as motion to adjourn uh seconded by President Portman. Yep. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the.
Good night everyone.
Thank you.
Good night everyone.
All right guys, have a good night everyone.